Call the meeting order and ask for a roll call please.
Yes, Your Honor. Councilmember Ashcraft?
Here.
Councilmember Chen?
Present.
Councilmember Goodrich?
Here.
Councilmember Griffiths?
Here.
Councilmember Kalani?
Present.
Councilmember Matucci?
I'm here.
Mayor Fury?
Thank you for joining us tonight as we continue to phase out of the stay-at-home orders. It's important to us that you have an opportunity to voice your comments during this pandemic. Public emails will continue to have a deadline of 2:00 p.m. on the day of the council meeting that you wish to comment on. Thank you for those of you who have met today's deadline. They have all been forwarded to the council as supplemental material and will be entered into the public record. Any emails submitted after the deadline will still be added to the public record, but we do not have them as of yet. For those of you tuning in via Facebook, YouTube, livestream, or city cable, because of the challenges faced in this council format and in accordance with Government Code Section 549, 54.3a, we will now dedicate a single 60-minute comment period to hear the public on all agenda items as well as for general orals by telephone call-in. The only exception to this 60-minute period is public hearings. Comments that are directly relevant to agenda-sized hearings will be taken as part of the actual hearing. You may participate by calling into the public input hotline. The number is 310-618-2404, and it will be displayed on the screen. Please be patient when you're calling in. You must be aware that our call center is very, very busy taking multiple phone calls, so you may get a busy signal when you first dial in. But keep on calling, and you will get in. And please try and maybe wait a minute or two and then do it again. City clerk, have emails received prior to 2:00 p.m. today been processed as supplemental material and provided to the council?
Yes, Your Honor.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda will be a flag salute led by Councilmember Goodrich, followed by an invocation by Councilmember Griffiths, uh, Councilmember Goodrich, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Please place your hand over your heart and repeat after me. Let us keep in our thoughts all those that have been affected by some of the worst fires in Los Angeles County history, which have been burning now for over two weeks. And let's especially keep in your thoughts the family of the firefighter who lost his life fighting the El Dorado Fire. Please pray for a quick end to the devastation being caused by these fires as well as for all the people working so hard in very difficult conditions to fight them. And as we hear in Torrance have a significant transition in our city management, let us pray for a long and happy and well-deserved retirement for our outgoing city manager, and may our incoming city manager have abundant success in guiding our city into the future. And lastly, let us pray for all those affected negatively by the COVID-19 pandemic. To all those who are sick or have lost loved ones, and to all the businesses that are struggling to remain viable, and the countless others who have been impacted in some way, may we have the strength to get us through this challenging times. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. I'll take a report of the city clerk on the post of the agenda.
Your Honor, this agenda was posted on Thursday, September 17, 2020.
Thank you. May we have a motion to weigh further reading? Councilmember Chen?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to weigh further reading of resolutions and ordinances after number and title.
Councilmember Griffiths?
I'll second that.
Roll call vote, Councilmember Ashcraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Chen?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodrich?
Aye.
Councilmember Griffiths?
Yes.
Councilmember Kalani?
Yes.
Councilmember Matucci?
Yes.
Mayor Fury?
Yes.
Your Honor, that motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Announcement of withdrawn deferred under supplemental items.
Yes, Your Honor, the city manager. There are no withdrawn or deferred items, but we do have supplemental materials available online and on the website, torranceca.gov. For Item 1, the call at the meeting door. Item 7, oral communication. Item 10, hearings, consider the appeal of the planning commission pertaining to mixed-use development consisting of a 53 senior residential condominium union on Prairie Avenue. Item 8B, accept an appropriate grant for child passenger safety program. Item 9B, approve three-year licensing and airport maintenance agreement for airport noise monitoring system. And Item 9E, consider options to receive public comment during city council meeting. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Uh, turning now to announcements. Earlier this year, the Social Services Commission began conducting Homeless Plan Listening Sessions. The public was invited to share their experiences and perceptions of homelessness in Torrance. The first listening session was held during the Social Services Commission meeting on February 27, 2020. Since March 2020, with the Los Angeles County Safe At Home Orders, our city commissions have temporarily suspended meetings. The Social Services Commission is ready to reconvene and invites the public to participate in the next meeting, which will be held virtually this Thursday, September 24, at 6:00 p.m. During this commission meeting, the commission will resume listening sessions with a second session for members to share their perceptions and experiences, and how the city might strengthen its response to address homelessness. The meeting agenda and information on how to participate in the virtual listening session is available at torranceca.gov/homelessplan. A survey is available on the webpage if you are unable to participate in the meeting. If you have any questions, please contact the city manager's office at 310-618-5880. Again, that is 310-618-5880. Next, I believe Councilmember Griffiths, you have an announcement?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is a reminder that the 2020 Census is still accepting submissions online, by phone, or by mail. To submit online, please visit 2020census.gov. Time is running out to complete your 2020 Census. It's important now, more than ever, to reach out to your friends, family, or neighbors and encourage them to submit their 2020 Census. The goal of the 2020 Census is a complete and accurate count of everyone living in the United States and its five territories. When submitting your 2020 Census, be sure to count yourself at the place where you are living and sleeping most of the time. If you would like more information on how the 2020 Census can help shape your community, please visit 2020census.gov. Let's help shape our community's future by ensuring that Torrance reaches 100% participation rate. Thank you.
Hopefully, we will get there. Uh, Councilmember Goodrich, you have an announcement?
Yes, I have an announcement regarding National Preparedness Month. This week, we continue National Preparedness Month with a focus on youth. We know, as stated in this year's theme, disasters don't wait, make your plan today. In our fourth and final week, we teach youth about preparedness. Disasters happen everywhere, and every member of the family can prepare. Preparedness for the future starts today. Talk to your kids about preparing for emergencies and what to do in case you are separated. Whether you are a kid or teen yourself, a parent or loved one, or work with youth, Ready Kids has tools and information to help before, during, and after disasters. You can visit them at ready.gov/kids. It is also suggested that everyone update your plans based on the Centers for Disease Control recommendations and local guidance due to the impacts of the coronavirus. More information and links to Torrance's Office of Emergency Services social media accounts can be found at torranceca.gov/oes. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. And lastly, Donna Dupron from the Torrance Area Chamber of Commerce has an announcement regarding Proposition 15. Donna?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor and Council. The Torrance Area Chamber of Commerce Government Affairs Policy Group has voted to oppose Proposition 15. Proposition 15 is a $12.5 billion a year property tax increase, the largest in state history, that is riddled with flaws which will hurt all Californians. The chamber identified the following three problems with Prop 15. Number one, hurts small business. Most small businesses rent the property on which they operate and have a triple net lease under which they are responsible for paying property taxes, insurance, and maintenance costs. Small businesses such as restaurants, gyms, barber shops, daycare centers, grocery stores, nail salons will all pay higher rents if Proposition 15 passes. Number two, it harms female and minority-owned businesses. Numerous studies show that increasing property taxes on small businesses will have a negative impact on businesses owned by women and minorities. Number three, lacks accountability and transparency. Flimsy reporting requirements in Prop 15 will enable government agencies to hide where they are spending the new tax dollars. There is no independent oversight. The California Assessors Association is opposing Prop 15, stating that it will cost more than $1 billion to implement in the first three years and would be impossible to administer. Moreover, groups representing two direct beneficiaries of the tax funds are not supporting the measure. The League of California Cities refused to support Prop 15 while the California School Boards Association voted to remain neutral. Passing Prop 15 would pummel California's economy at the worst time. The commercial market is struggling now as Californians increasingly work from home and as brick-and-mortar retailers and restaurants remain closed. It must never be forgotten that when taxes go up, there is a downstream effect. This measure would raise the cost of living as grocery stores, retailers, and other businesses would face higher costs. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Donna, and for the edification of everyone. Uh, along with Prop 15, we will be addressing a number of proposition, uh, Item 9F on our calendar tonight, so stand by for that. Uh, that takes us to Community Matters, uh, 6A. Could I have a number and title for that, please?
Of course, Your Honor. This is Resolution Number 2020-100, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Torrance, California honoring city manager Leroy J. Jackson upon his retirement from the city after 54 years of service.
And I will take a motion before we, uh, get on with the proclamation, with the resolution. Councilmember Griffiths?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution Number 2020-100.
Councilwoman Kalani?
I will second that. Thank you.
Roll call vote, Councilmember Ashcraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Chen?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodrich?
Aye.
Councilmember Griffiths?
Yes.
Councilmember Kalani?
Yes.
Councilmember Matucci?
Yes.
Mayor Fury?
Very reluctantly, yes.
Your Honor, that motion carries unanimously.
Okay, I will now read the proclamation with the assistance of my colleagues. Whereas Leroy J. Jackson began his career with the City of Torrance as a personnel analyst in the Personnel Department on August 23, 1966. He was promoted to Senior Administrative Analyst in the City Manager's Office, then to Assistant to the City Manager, Senior Assistant to the City Manager, Chief Assistant to the City Manager, and to the Assistant City Manager in 1981.
Whereas, on January 17, 1983, the city council appointed Leroy as City Manager to succeed Edward J. Ferrero as the fourth person to hold that position. In his early years with the city, Leroy worked with mayors Albert Eisen and Ken Miller. Then, as city manager, he served mayors James Armstrong, Katie Geis-
Then, as City Manager, he served mayors James Armstrong, Katie Geiser, Dee Hardison, Dan Walker, Frank Scotto, and Patrick Fury, along with councilmembers Don Wilson, Bill Applegate, Rick Dick Rosberg, Mark Worth, Tim Mock, George Nocano, Don Lee, Maureen O'Donnell, Marcia Cribbs, Jack Masserian, Harvey Horowitz, Paul Nowaka, Hope Wacowski, Ted Lou, Mike Mono, Pat McIntyre, Rod Giden, Tom Brewer, Gene Drevno, Bill Sutherland, Jean Barnett, Cliff Newmark, Susan Relinger, Kurt Wedeman, Heidi Ashcraft, Tim Goodrich, Jeff Rizzo, Mike Griffiths, Kurt Wedeman. Lost my line, sorry. There's too many names on this page. Milton Herring, George Chan, Aurelia Matucci, and Sharon Colani. As City Manager, he carried out the policies and directions set by the mayors and council across his tenure. He appreciated each elected official's viewpoint and allowed each to have open communication lines with him and the management team. And?
Whereas, Leroy served in this capacity for more than thirty-seven years, the longest-tenured City Manager in Torrance's history. During his tenure, Leroy worked with and mentored forty-four department heads, including six police chiefs and five fire chiefs, guiding them to achieve success with city projects as well as personal goals. He was a strong leader with a gentle approach, opening, open to listening to ideas and strategizing how to make things work, encouraging his management team to think beyond the obvious and stretch their limits. And whereas, while it would be futile to list the numerous capital projects Leroy had brought to fruition over his fifty-four years, it is important to mention that his vision for the city's future was grounded in its past. A historian at heart, Leroy made decisions based on where the city had been, lessons learned, and knowing how to proceed to success. Recently, he encouraged the modernization of city buses to a one-hundred-percent alternative-fueled CNG fleet, and supported the team efforts to develop the new Torrance Transit Terminal and purchasing the land needed for the facility and securing the funding necessary for its construction. And?
Whereas Leroy stated that he wants the credit for his accomplishments to go to his management team, as they did the work. The executive staff who reported to Leroy were Robert Ink, Vic Chicagoi, Kathy Geno, Larry Solomon, Jerry Boutwell, Phil Geo, Danny Santana, Jeff Gibson, Dave Ferrin, Jim Isomoto, Ralph Griffo, John Jones, Jean Barnett, Eric Sau, Mary Giordano, William Lindor, Marc Isnerna, William Wacowski, Rick Bongard, Scott Adams, Richard DeYoung, Chuck Mogadichian, Cheryl Ballou, Phil Tilden, Bill White, Ralph Ishmael, Bob Okane, Elaine Weiner, Eve Berg, Mark Matuda, Don New, Jim Herron, Joseph Delan, Delan, Dela Durante, Donald Nash, Craig Belazarian, Bob Bestie, Richard Burke, Jane Brobbone, Brooks Bell, Richard Garcia, Kim Turner, Tom Little, Art Orque, Aram Shapari. And?
Whereas, Leroy respected and enjoyed working with his administrative assistants, Maya Johnson, Joanne Jones, Maria Seska, and Dorothy Ellis, often sharing laughter over exchanging family stories and referring to them as Radar or Mash when they put documents in front of him to sign. Together, they encouraged and supported the executive and management team. And?
Whereas, Leroy is humble in his appreciation of people. He understood and practiced that family comes first and generously extend that understanding to his staff and the Torrance community. He personally wrote notes of appreciation, congratulations, and sympathy to city employees and residents, letting them know they were supported by their city family. Leroy's knowledge of the city's history and his personal outreach was well-known as he established programs to get to know employees face-to-face through new employee orientations, manager forums, and employee appreciation events. And? Whereas, a natural storyteller with a brilliantly sharp mind, Leroy could recall tales of yesteryear as if it were yesterday. His broad scope of knowledge is impressive, not only of his fifty-four years of service, but dating back before the city's incorporation in nineteen twenty-one. A man of solid values and many special interests, Leroy often shared with his staff the adventures of his children, humorous dog tales, passion for beekeeping, fascination with the Civil War, owning and restoring Model As and Model Ts, tracing genealogy, and collecting historical photos. And whereas, Leroy oversaw a city with a population of nearly one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand and an operating budget of three-hundred-and-twenty-two million dollars. Torrance consistently ranks among the safest cities in the country. His leadership has been instrumental in guiding Torrance and keeping us as, as a, as a leader among cities of comparable size in the state of California. Leroy led by example, always being honest, genuine, and transparent. His legacy will live on through the strong management team that he has put together. And?
Whereas, Leroy, we wish you, your wife Connie, six children, twelve grandchildren, and eight great-grandchildren all the happiness that your love of family can bring. Now that you have more time to share together, with gratitude, we thank you for serving us all these years. The city will be forever grateful. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Torrance, California does hereby commend, honor, and congratulate Leroy J. Jackson for his dedication, professionalism, and contributions to the City of Torrance while in our employ. And be it further resolved that we extend every good wish to Leroy for a full, rewarding, and enjoyable life in his retirement years. Introduced, approved, and adopted this twenty-second day of September, two thousand and twenty. At this time, I'd like to ask Aram Shapariyan, our current Assistant City Manager, and our future City Manager, to say a few words.
Thank you, Mayor Fury. This is Aram Shapariyan. But those are getting claps. I appreciate that. Oliver Mayor Fury, esteemed City Councilmembers, and this is Connie Jackson, Jackson and Macy families, Torrance community, our city employee family watching this evening, and boss. I would like to take this opportunity on behalf of the city's executive team and city employees to congratulate our boss, Mr. Leroy J. Jackson, upon his retirement from the City of Torrance after fifty-four years of exemplary and inspirational service. While most of us were not here thirty-seven years ago when Leroy became City Manager, certainly not here when he first started, I'm sure I'm speaking on behalf of all the current and former department heads, managers, and city staff when I say how blessed and fortunate we are to call Leroy our boss. Leroy, not Mr. Jackson, since that was his father, embodies the pure spirit of a public servant. He has led by example throughout the years by being honest, transparent, community-centric, and always provided the city an organization with sincere attention and care the community of Torrance deserves. As a leader, boss, and mentor, Leroy was able to create an environment where you felt welcome, appreciated, and heard. He was not shy to ask you countless questions, send you back for more homework, and challenged us to all seek alternative options, solutions, and to be creative in our problem-solving. He empowered his team to be proactive, take charge, and always have the best interest of Torrance community at heart. Leroy's ability to storytell, chuckle, and share his level books, television shows, and Torrance history was pure joy, and me working for Leroy a true pleasure. Just a quick story, when I promoted to Assistant City Manager, Mary Giordano, then the ACM, told me to be ready to be interrupted by Leroy throughout the day and be ready to tell him you need to work on the project. Hint, hint. When I came to appreciate boss stopping by, taking a seat in my Ed McMahon-like chair, like on the show set, and I had Johnny Carson hearing him share his thoughts, insights, and stories. Wednesday morning, staff meetings, debriefs after long council meeting were the norm. One conversation led to another, but I realized that throughout these interactions, Leroy was guiding us, making us ponder, and always leaving us with ten items to follow up. In closing, I want to personally thank Leroy for inspiring me to pursue public service in the best city in America. Realizing that I will never be able to fill his boots, I vow to live up to his legacy of service, embracing integrity while holding the highest ideals of public administration. To never forget, the City Council sets policy, and the role of the City Manager is to work with the dynamic team of individuals to bring the community's vision to reality. To our boss, City Council, and Torrance community, rest assured that the generation of leaders Leroy helped groom and cultivate are here, able, ready, willing, and motivated to carry Leroy's vision and help serve future Torrance generations. Leroy may be retiring and leaving the city, but he will forever remain our boss. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Leroy.
Thank you, Aram. At this time, I'd like to ask Dr. Tim Stowe, who is the interim superintendent from Torrance Unified School District, to offer his congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor Fury, and members of the council. Aram, I didn't know Leroy, when he started as City Manager, I was a seventh grader at Portland Middle School, where his son is now principal. How's that? I also was his employee in high school when I worked for the city, Park and Rec Department, so we go way back. But this night is about you, Leroy. And, you know, on behalf of the Board of Education, the staff, and students of the Torrance Unified School District, I do want to thank you for the many years of service and the commitment that you have provided to this community. You have supported and nurtured programs for children, you know, not just USC students, but all children in the community, and you've had a vision for assisting them in ways that they can grow emotionally, physically, as well as supporting their education. You know, some things that I've had the pleasure to work on with city staff, you know, as it relates to libraries or park and rec, have added value to the city, added value to the work that we're doing in educating students in the community, so thank you for that. It's been a pleasure to work with you and all your staff over the years, and we wish you a tremendous retirement. I do have, as Mr. Dozzy, someone who's served on both the council and the school board, likes to say, a certificate of high perceived value, and so that will be sent over to you tomorrow. And again, congratulations, and thank you, Mayor and Council, for the time to congratulate Leroy tonight.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Doctors, thank you, Doctor Stowe. And at this time, I think we will have an opportunity to hear from Mr. Jackson.
Well, Mayor, after that, I'm kind of choked up. I will try to do what I can do for a guy that doesn't like being in pictures. You guys sure gathered together some pictures. I can't believe it. Mayor and Council, I thank you so much for these years you've allowed me to serve this city and for all of the opportunities open to me. Connie and I have had our lives and our careers intertwined with Torrance. It is a part and parcel to who we are. Our first son was born just three days after my first day with the city. Each of our six children became part of the city hall, grew up in Torrance, and were never shy of telling me what I could do to make Torrance better. Connie has taught several generations of Torrance parents and children in birth and delivery, mommy and me, and toddler music and movement. There was a time in Torrance when she was so involved with those classes, where I was often introduced as Mr. Connie Jackson, and it was kind of fascinating to see them make the connection between myself and her. I deeply enjoyed my career with the city and have been blessed with knowing and being mentored by Edward J. Ferrero, my predecessor, and being part of his executive staff. All the department heads I worked with, Jack McKinnon, Chief Lucas Moniker, Chief Koenig, Glenn Kirkup, Harry Van Bellum, and others, each helped me along the way, voices from the past. There also has been my staff, Liz Rojas, Dan McLean, Kathy Keen, Brian Sunshine, Michael Smith, Ally, Dom, Jay, Katie, Jill, Zelma, Nancy, and Kim, and so many others now and across the years. They were all, were and are the hard-working team that made this office of City Manager and me shine. I'm so proud of the organization I have managed. The city family met all challenges and constantly served council and our citizens through tough years and good, through crisis and opportunity, and through ever-happening challenges. The last six months have been proof in the pudding of their ability to step up to cyber COVID, civil unrest, and financial crisis. With Aram, this team will carry you and the community in experiences, challenges of the future. As always, I share with you how much of who I am is family. My spirited partner Connie, my children have all been and are part of who I am. And so, I close, wishing all of Torrance the best, and knowing the best is yet to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. A round of applause, everyone. Mr. Jackson, on behalf of my colleagues on the council, the seven mayors, elected mayors that preceded me, and all the elected officials that have served with you, and I say it, with you, congratulations. But at this time, my colleagues and I have a surprise proclamation that we would like to present to Mr. Jackson. Councilmember Goodrich, would you start this proclamation, sir? Oh, you knew we were doing this, right?
Surprise, Mayor.
I apologize.
You don't have it? You don't have it? I'll start it off. Okay, I'll start it off. Whereas Leroy J. Jackson has given fifty-four years of dedicated service to the City of Torrance and has spent the last thirty-seven years working as the City Manager. And?
Whereas, through his commitment, perseverance, and distinguished leadership, he channeled his passion into a lifelong career in helping to deliver positive changes and lasting impact on this community. And?
Whereas Leroy is led by example and with integrity, that inspire others to take action, guiding the implementation and expansion of essential programs that enrich the quality of life for children and their families. And?
If it's me, I don't have that proclamation, of course.
I'll do it. Whereas?
Thank you.
Whereas Leroy's knowledge of Torrance's history is legendary. He was frequently asked to speak at various functions to share his vast knowledge, and he graciously welcomed the opportunity to meet and interact with the community. And whereas, dedicated to upholding the proud traditions and high standards of our city, Leroy has been instrumental in protecting the security of and shaping our community for new generations. And? I lost it, too. If it's my turn, I don't have it. Sorry.
I'll take it, Mayor.
Sharon? Thank you.
I'll take it. Whereas Leroy made a positive and lasting impact on this community and will always be remembered as an inspiring and loyal individual.
and will always be remembered as an inspiring and loyal individual, dedicated to his profession and the commitment to excellence for all of our citizens.
Now therefore, I, Patrick J. Fury, as mayor of the City of Torrance, California, do hereby proclaim September thirtieth, twenty twenty, as Leroy J. Jackson Day in the City of Torrance, and I ask the entire community to join in this celebration as we applaud Leroy's fifty-four years of continued service and thirty-seven years as city manager. On behalf of the city council, we wish Leroy the very best in his retirement, presented this twenty-second day of September, twenty twenty. Well, I thank you. At this time, we will take a five-minute recess. We will return shortly. Thank you for your patience. Clear. Thank you, too. All right, we're back from our recess. And now we're moving on to the sixty-minute public comment period for agenda items and agenda orals. If any members of the public want to speak, please call the public comment hotline now at three one oh, six one eight two four zero four. City Council Rules of Order, Section six point four E, provides that speakers can only speak once. Any speaker that attempts to speak a second time on any item will be disconnected. Callers will have one minute to speak on one agenda item, two minutes total to speak for, on two or more agenda items, and one minute for general oral. Each speaker will have a maximum of three minutes, and then they will be disconnected automatically. And I ask the speakers to please speak when prompted, and state the number of the agenda item or items you wish to speak on, or if you want to make a general comment. There is a delay in the broadcast, so don't try to follow what you may be hearing on the broadcast. Please turn down the volume on your TV or viewing device, and try not to use Bluetooth or speaker phones. When speaking on agenda items, you must be on topic. We would like to get in as many speakers as possible. If you're not speaking on topic, or if we can't tell if you are on topic, you'll get a warning to stay on topic, and if you don't, then you'll be cut off. You'll forfeit the remainder of your time, and we'll move on to the next caller pursuant to City Council Rules of Order, Section six point five and Section six point seven, V three and V four. If there are no speakers waiting before the sixty-minute period has elapsed, we will close the public comment portion of the meeting and move on. Please note that the council orals will still take place at the end of the meeting. With regard to public comment, if the item is not on the agenda, under the Ralph M. Brown Act, sitting council cannot act on items raised during public comment, but may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed. Request clarification or refer the item to staff. You've heard the admonitions to the time constraints. So, call center, do we have anybody signed up?
Yes, Mayor, we do. I'll begin to patch the callers in.
Okay.
Mary Ann H., you are now unmuted. Can you please state which agenda item you are calling on?
General announcements.
Thank you. Your one minute starts now.
Thank you. Good afternoon, or good evening, Mayor and council. Mary Ann Hamada here, from the president of the North Torrance Neighborhood Association. We wanted to invite you and the public to our candidate forum for the Torrance Unified School District School Board on October first at seven PM. Of course, we'll be, the meeting will be virtual this Zoom, on Zoom, and you can catch us on Twitter, Facebook, and at northtorrancena.org to register for this meeting. That's all. Have a good night. Thank you for all that you do every day. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'll move on to the next caller, Mayor. Stephanie E., you are now unmuted. Can you please state which agenda item you are calling on?
I have a general comment.
Thank you. Your one minute starts now.
In the Christmas lights area of Torrance, the emergency access lane plan did not allow parking on one side of many streets at a time when parking is already difficult and when residents would like to have guests. The parking restrictions made life hell for many multi-car families, and for people coming home late at night after all the spots near home are taken, who then had to walk many blocks through a neighborhood that is no longer safe. At Robert Road and TCH, people still parked everywhere, on other streets where people didn't park on one side of the street. Pedestrians filled that space. Previously, parked cars kept pedestrians safely on the sidewalk. Now adults and little ones are all walking barely arm's length from moving vehicles. When a solution to a problem causes other problems, the plan needs to be reconsidered. Please help save Christmas. Thank you. Have a good night.
I'll move on to the next caller, Mayor. Julia R., you are now unmuted. Can you please state which agenda item you are calling on?
General comment, please.
Thank you. Your one minute starts now.
You all talk about wanting more oversight as a reason to not support Prop fifteen, but you won't even make a civilian oversight commission for your police department. Y'all are hypocrites. Listening to all of the anti-black rhetoric that comes up at these meetings the past few months makes me really wonder how we are still at the point of people being more concerned with being called a racist than actually doing anything to support Black Lives and the lives of those affected by police violence. How are we so cowardly that we are swayed by hateful fearmongering as opposed to doing our very best to support our community's neighbors? Christopher DeAndre Mitchell was our neighbor, and his mother still is. He went to our schools, grew up in our communities. We have to do better. We have to do better. You have to do better, or we are going to find others who will. I demand you fire officers Concanon and Chavez and create a civilian oversight commission in line with Black Lives Matter Los Angeles. Do better, learn from your mistakes, and stop letting...
That caller was disconnected because her time was up. I'll move on to the next caller, Mayor. Rosie J., you are now unmuted. Can you please state which agenda item you are calling on?
Six and public comments.
Thank you. Your two minutes start now.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. This is Rosie Javid, Vice Chair of Library Commission. I just wanted to thank Mr. Jackson for his fifty-four years of service as a city manager. He was always present and available for all of our joint commission meetings, supporting the libraries and their programs, knowledgeable, approachable, supportive, professional, a go-getter, and a problem solver. Our commission thanks you, and enjoy every single day of your well-deserved retirement. And Mr. Chaparian, congratulations on your position as the incoming manager. And my last note I'd like to just add is that tomorrow at three thirty, there will be a manga event for students through the Torrance library, and please call through and dial six one eight five nine six four for more details. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
I'll move on to the next caller, Mayor. Mary Ann E., you are now unmuted. Can you please state which agenda item you are calling on?
Oral communications, please.
Thank you. Your one minute starts now.
I'm calling out justice for Christopher DeAndre Mitchell. Please, not even please, fire Matthew Concanon and Anthony Chavez, create an oversight commission that holds officers accountable. And I have to look at this thing with Leroy, where of course he knows nineteen twenty-one history, that the KKK establishment of a city manager that holds power over elected officials, that then have to fall in line with him. And that's why thirty-seven years he's been holding that. He's been holding that line. And the Civil War assassination, that doesn't surprise me remotely. I think it's deeply concerning that Fury would say, I sit... I think it's deeply concerning that Fury would say, I sit, um, or that I say it, like, I'm with you, serve, serving with him. He's, Fury's a puppet, like, what choice does Fury have?
Mayor, that caller was disconnected because her time was up. I'll move on to the next caller. Michelle R., you are now unmuted. Can you please state which agenda item you are calling on?
General comment.
Thank you, your one minute starts now.
I'm calling to demand action from this council in calling for accountability from Torrance Police Department for the senseless murder of Christopher DeAndre Mitchell by Sergeant Matthew Concanon and Anthony Chavez. It's been nearly two years, and this council continues to sit idly by without any attempt to address racist policing in Torrance, or allowing for civic engagement in our justice system by establishing a civilian oversight committee to investigate police misconduct. Despite countless calls from community members, you continue to deny us our right to ensure lawful policing and to prevent abuses of power. You claim to represent community interests, yet your silence and inaction is a clear indication that your allegiance is first and foremost to the corrupt police union. You feign outrage at the brutal murders of George Floyd and Breonna Taylor, yet when one of our own falls victim to militarized policing in our own community, you attempt to silence public outcry and deny us equitable and actionable change. We are outraged. Sergeant Matthew Concanon and Anthony Chavez should be fired.
Mayor, that caller was disconnected because her time was up. I'll move on to the next caller. Stephanie P., you are now unmuted. Can you please state which agenda item you are calling on?
Oral communications.
Thank you, your one minute starts now.
I'm calling to talk to the new city manager. Tonight's your first night. I would like to tell you that you're going to be hearing a lot from us, because Black Lives Matter, because Christopher DeAndre Mitchell's life matters. And the first thing you need to, the only thing you need to even worry about right now is setting up a civilian oversight committee so there is some shred of accountability for the police department. We are going to be on you every day of your tenure until this happens. We will not stop. Fire Anthony Chavez. Fire Matthew Concanon. I stand with Cheryl and Haynes, I stand with Black Lives Matter. Christopher should not have been murdered, and we will not stop asking for justice. I yield my time.
I'll move on to the next caller, Mayor. Garrett W., you are now unmuted. Can you please state which agenda item you are calling on?
General comments.
Thank you, your one minute starts now.
Well, having been a Torrance resident for most of my childhood and all of my adult life, uh, I just wanted to say thank you to Leroy Jackson for shepherding and guiding the city all those years. We appreciate all your abilities and efforts that have kept the city solvent, viable, and wholesome for all those years. You really need to enjoy your well-deserved retirement, and then I am flabbergasted with 54 years. That is 378 dog years. I was, uh, eight years old when you started the city, so thank you for all your services and enjoy your retirement. That's it, thank you.
I'll move on to the next caller, Mayor. Kim I., you are now unmuted. Can you please state which agenda item you are calling on?
Oral comments.
Thank you, your one minute starts now.
I'm gonna make this quick, we've been calling every week for I don't know how long, and nothing has happened. You seem to have no issue with your police officers killing Christopher DeAndre Mitchell, or any black citizen for that matter. This man deserves justice. You need to fire the officers Anthony Chavez and Matthew Concanon, and again, you need to create a civilian oversight commission of Torrance Police Department. Get used to hearing from us, we're going to keep calling until you do the right thing. I don't know how you can look yourself in the mirror every day, knowing this man, death is on your hands. I really just don't know. I don't have anything else to say.
I'll move on to the next caller, Mayor. Becky G., you are now unmuted. Can you please state which agenda item you are calling on?
General public comment.
Thank you, your one minute starts now.
I'm calling to speak with the management upholding racism and anti-blackness in Torrance City Council. There's only one name on my list, and that's Christopher DeAndre Mitchell, and y'all will never forget his name. His life matters. Nothing matters what each of you do in the city of Torrance if you continue to uphold racism and anti-blackness. That will be your fucking legacy, Leroy. Let's give a clap for that.
Mayor, it appears that that caller had disconnected herself. I'll move on to the next caller. Derek W., you are now unmuted. Can you please state which agenda item you are calling on?
Public comment.
Thank you, your one minute starts now.
I'm a resident of Los Angeles and a public school teacher in the city as well. In, in line with the demands of Black Lives Matter in Los Angeles, I'm immediately demanding the following actions be taken in order to provide justice for Christopher DeAndre Mitchell, who was murdered in cold blood by two of your police officers. I'm also demanding the following actions be taken in order to provide justice and healing for Christopher's mother, his family, and all of his friends and loved ones. Immediately fire Torrance Police Officers Matthew Concanon and Anthony Chavez. The establishment of a civilian oversight commission to provide necessary transparency and accountability for the Torrance Police Department. Additionally, both officers need to be charged with murder, as they have killed Torrance community members before they murdered Christopher DeAndre Mitchell. Christopher was shot within 15 seconds of officers engaging him. That is absolutely pathetic and an atrocity. He followed every order the officers gave him, and he was killed for this? Mayor and the...
Mayor, that caller was disconnected because his time was up. I'll move on to the next caller. Jonas D., you are now unmuted. Can you please state which agenda item you are calling on?
Uh, oral communication.
Thank you, your one minute starts now.
I've been invested in community, in community service and leadership in Torrance, starting way back when I was a teenager at Cali Mayor Middle School, where I served as student body president. I've engaged in various leadership roles in our community since then, include serving as an intern for Assembly Member, uh, Marzuti as a college student. I'm now a teacher at LAUSD, and I see the ways in which Torrance's inaction on racial and economic justice affects my students' lives now. Um, I'm a white person, I've never had to call the police in Torrance, but my friends of color have shared with me that they've been harassed and targeted by Torrance police. Racism plagues Torrance, and needless to say, I'm extremely saddened every week that goes by and Christopher DeAndre Mitchell's murderers are free. It is shameful that you have not taken any measures to prevent racist police murders, uh, from happening again. Uh, what you have is the power to create a civilian oversight committee now, long ago, um, and...
Mayor, that caller was disconnected because their time was up. I'll move on to the next caller. Sheila B., you are now unmuted. Can you please state which agenda item you are calling on?
Oral communications.
Thank you, your one minute starts now.
Do you notice the growing list for calls of accountability? It even came from the United Nations. It's past time, it's been almost two years since the murder of Christopher DeAndre Mitchell. Justice delayed is justice denied. True justice is not even attainable. You can't bring him back. Justice is a family hole again. Justice is a lack of trauma. You can't do that, but you can meet the demands of this family. This will at least give justice in his name, justice to his family. It is the least you can do, and it's high time you do it. Come hell or high water, we will get these demands met. We will continue to be relentless in the pursuit of our demands. You will not silence us, you will not deter us. This is a debt owed to the family. May the injustice and white supremacy you continue to wield in this time, and the spirits of those killed by Torrance Police Department haunt you and future generations, you fuckers.
Mayor, that caller appears to have disconnected herself, so I'll move on to the next caller. Eli R., you are now unmuted. Can you please state which agenda item you are calling on?
Yeah, uh, 9A, 9B, and general comment.
Thank you, your three minutes start now.
Okay, on, uh, 9A, on our COVID response, um, disappointed the council's conclusion last week to only have one unattended vote-by-mail drop box. Please reconsider having five unattended vote-by-mail drop boxes to help our democracy during COVID. There are a plethora of studies showing increased voting options, increases voting turnout, also reducing the number of potential polling locations for a minority group is discriminatory. You can see many suits, uh, there's Anderson v. Raffensperger. Um, our immunocompromised citizens that are afraid of COVID need as many options as they can at this time. Um, on 9B, um, thanks for listening and considering what I said last week, um, and it's nice to hear you guys talk about what I said. Um, I sent you guys a more in-depth explanation of how I could implement off-the-shelf hardware and, um, free API, um, to implement the same system, um, but you can read my email, um, because it's kind of long. And then my general comment is also, please consider a civilian review board. While I appreciate what some of the things our police does, our police needs to be accountable by our citizens. If they do not answer to our citizens, then who are they serving and protecting? Uh, take the recommendation of the Los Angeles Grand Jury from 2018. You can end this call to action and restore our faith in the police who serve us. That's all for today, thanks.
I'll move on to the next caller, Mayor. Pat B., you are now unmuted. Can you please state which agenda item you are calling on?
Calling on general public comment.
Thank you, your one minute starts now.
So, once again, uh, I'm calling in solidarity with Black Lives Matter to demand a microscopic amount of justice for Christopher DeAndre Mitchell in the form of firing officers Anthony Chavez and Matthew Concanon for Christopher's murder. I also am, uh, echoing the demand that y'all establish a civilian oversight commission for Torrance PD, so that they can be held accountable when they pull this kind of bullshit, because they will inevitably pull this bullshit and murder more people. Again, at least until y'all establish some kind of accountability for the horrific things they do to your residents in Torrance, or at least your black and person-of-color residents in Torrance. Do the very bare minimal amount of justice for Christopher, for his family, for his mother, and establish a civilian oversight commission and fire officers Chavez and Concanon. It's so simple, we will stop...
Mayor, that caller was disconnected because her time was up. I'll move on to the next caller. Alenny J., you are now unmuted. Can you please state which agenda item you are calling on?
General comment.
Thank you, your one minute starts now.
I'm calling, uh, to demand justice for Christopher DeAndre Mitchell. A week after week, um, it's been 94 weeks that you've heard the cries of the constituents that you represent. I often, you know, do wonder if you care at all, or if you do actually support, um, extrajudicial killing, which is, you know, illegal. As people who are sworn to serve, um, it's surprising to me that you support this. Um, and at the very least, I think it's, you know, it's time to get with, uh, with the program, with the, with the movement, and understand that you need to, um, appoint, um, an oversight committee. It's the bare minimum, you know, step up the bar.
Mayor, that caller appears to have disconnected themselves, so I'll move on to the next caller. Debbie H., you are now unmuted. Can you please state which agenda item you are calling on?
Item 9A and oral.
Thank you, your two minutes start now.
Under 9A, I just wanted to thank staff for assisting our restaurants, and you're just doing a fabulous job helping them stay open and figuring out ways to have al fresco dining, and that really seems to be the rage right now, and I hope we can continue it after this pandemic fails. Also, Janet Payne is with me and wanted to add something under orals.
This is Janet Payne, number seven, orals. I just would like to say very quickly, I support keeping the public comment as it is.
And next, under orals, we want to say, Leroy, our dear friend, thank you for your incredible 54 years of service. We appreciate your love of history and the care you took in following the vision of Jared Sidney Torrance to maintain balance. The Leroy legacy will live on for decades to come. We have one last thing to say. Happy trails to you till we meet again. Good night, thank you. We're done.
I'll move on to the next caller, Mayor.
Thank you.
Melissa W., you are now unmuted. Can you please state which agenda item you are calling on?
Sure, 9E and oral.
Thank you, your two minutes start now.
Okay, uh, most importantly, I wanted to also thank Leroy Jackson for his many years of service. Uh, he's been serving Torrance about as long as I've been alive, so that's not a very short time. And, uh, his knowledge and experience that he brings to us has been amazing, and, um, I think we all appreciate it. And I just want him and his family, um, also to know that we thank their family, his family, uh, for all the time that he has spent with us, and we want him to have the best retirement, and I want it to be a long, happy retirement, um, wishing that to him. Um, and then the 9E regarding the orals and how it's working, um, I, I would say leave it as it is now for now. Um, unfortunately, I don't see Payne accompany to do it. However, it took me a long time to get through tonight, but if we could figure out legally how we can stop some vulgar language people and, um, some, uh, other items not to be on the agenda, I'd be for that, and maybe I would rather spend the money fighting that. And that's it, thank you so much, bye-bye.
I'll move on to the next caller, Mayor. Mateos, you are now unmuted. Can you please state which agenda item you are calling on?
General comment.
Thank you, your one minute starts now.
I'm calling again to ask that the council fire officers Anthony Chavez and Matthew Concanon for the murder of Christopher DeAndre Mitchell. It's clear this council isn't motivated by a desire to protect its citizens of color, so today I'll try to appeal to your self-interests. Jackie White, it's clear these two men are wrongdoing, has lost numerous major endorsements recently. People in power know that she's wrong, and just as time is elucidating the injustice of the DA's actions, it will also reveal the evil of your own inaction. You can still have a hand in the justice Christopher DeAndre Mitchell is owed. Fire the murderers who killed him, and form a civilian oversight commission to hold Torrance PD accountable. Do the right thing. I yield the rest of my time.
I'll move on to the next caller, Mayor. Maggie G., you are now unmuted. Can you please state which agenda item you are calling on?
Uh, 9E and oral comments.
Thank you, your two minutes start now.
All right, regards to 9E, I think you need to keep it as it is. You guys should actually go back to allowing everyone to have the two minutes you originally allowed. It's also ridiculous you don't leave your cameras on while you receive a comment. I think that people should see your reaction. Lastly, or secondly, I want to demand justice for Christopher DeAndre Mitchell and the firing of Anthony Chavez and Matthew Concanon. And lastly, I want, I demand installation of all five vote-by-mail drop boxes. As you know, Torrance has 91K registered voters, and the California Voters Choice Act recommends one box for 15K registered voters, and our neighboring city of Carson actually has seven boxes for their 53K registered voters. In regards to your concerns about vandalism, these boxes have been designed to withstand vandalism removal and weather. It's a felony to tamper with them, they are locked and only allowed to authorized individuals. Additionally, if you think that a USPS mailbox is secure, I don't understand why a vote-by-mail box is not secure enough. Also, the USPS is not as reliable, and voters should have a choice to choose different options available, especially during a pandemic where we have any need to come up with any veto compromised voters, or those who don't feel safe in public places, such as a voting center, who have access to the ability for their mail-in ballot. Essential workers who work odd hours, or those with lost minute planning, should have the flexibility to use a 24-hour drop box. I urge you to consider the majority needs of your citizens that you serve instead of your personal opinion. I yield my time. Thanks.
I'll move on to the next caller, Mayor. ALO, you are now unmuted. Can you please state which agenda item you are calling on?
General comment.
Thank you, your one minute starts now.
So first of all, I want to start off with this. You guys got to help the homeless people, man. So first of all, I want to start off with this. You guys got to help the homeless people, man. I've been noticed you guys have been slacking on that a little bit. And I just want to say, I know you guys are trying, but just keep on trying harder if you guys can try all the best you can. And yeah, and first of all, I thought I want to say I yield my time. And anyone who is, um, listening to this, whatever. Bye.
I'll move on to the next caller, Mayor. Sarah F., you are now unmuted. Can you please state which agenda item you are calling on?
Uh, general comment.
Thank you. Your one minute starts now.
Back at it again. So, uh, justice for Christopher DeAndre Mitchell and his family. Fire officers Anthony Chavez and Matthew Concanon, charged them with murder, because they are murderers in fact. Create a civilian oversight, which you were told to do in, um, I don't know, two thousand eighteen by a grand fucking jury. How fucking hard is it to do? Also, install all five ballot drop boxes. The postal service is currently being slowed down, and we all know it. People need these boxes in the middle of a fucking pandemic. Um, start listening to our demands, and I yield the rest of my time. Fuck all of you.
I'll move on to the next caller, Mayor. Kelsey R., you are now unmuted. Can you please state which agenda item you are calling on?
Oral communication, please.
Thank you. Your one minute starts now.
City Council, do your job, please. I urge you to install five vote-by-mail ballot boxes. Like, are you serious? Why one box? You're taking away opportunities for people to vote. This is such a disservice to our city to not promote, promote them. Like, come on. More than one box can help ensure people can still vote while staying safe. I also stand in support for Black Lives Matter, and I demand that you fire officers Anthony Chavez and Matthew Concanon for murdering Christopher DeAndre Mitchell, and that a civilian oversight commission can be established for Torrance Police Department. Do your damn job and step off. Damn, like, demand justice for Christopher and his family. Stop being silent about this corrupt department. Torrance City Council, you disgust me. Thank you for your time.
I'll move on to the next caller, Mayor. Andrea S., you are now unmuted. Can you please state which agenda item you are calling on?
Hello?
Andrea S., you are now unmuted. Can you please state which agenda item you are calling on?
Nine E and public comment.
Thank you. Your two minutes start now.
All right. So I just want to say that I'm highly disappointed that you only wanted one vote-by-mail drop box. Are you ki- are you kidding me? We need, we need all, we need all five, first of all. Carson has seven, and they have nineteen square miles. Torrance has one, and we only have twenty squ- well, we only have twenty square miles? That's, that's really sad. Honestly, I, I think you need to prioritize. Maybe you can't see it because you're all like white, middle, upper-class people, um, except for Chen, but you're, you're all at least middle-class people that don't care about the working class. We need these vote-by-mail drop boxes, and because you are wealthy, you don't, you just don't see that, that other people have different needs than you. I also want to stand in support of Black Lives Matter L.A. and Christopher DeAndre Mitchell's family in saying that we need, you need to fire and prosecute Anthony Chavez and Matthew Concanon. Leroy Jackson, you should have done that a long time ago. You've had the power to do that, and that's your legacy. Your le- legacy is racist. You like the Civil War, which smells racist, honestly. Who likes the Civil War? Who still talks about the Civil War right now? Like, only like Confederate lovers are like racist. Also, you need to do more about the homelessness crisis. Why not instead, uh, T O C is giving out meals to students, right? Leftover meals can go to the unhoused population and our neighbors. I think everybody in the city needs to start treating our neighbors right. You need to start giving, allocating more resources instead of investing in the police through the unhoused population, through services that will help the community. And anyways, yeah, I don't know. I'm just done with you. Mike Griffith, I forgot to roast you the last time. You look like Mr. Potato Head, and when we talked on the phone, you didn't let, let me speak. You spoke over me. So you don't care about your constituents. All right, that's done.
I'll move on to the next caller, Mayor. Sherlyn, you are now unmuted. Can you please state which agenda item you are calling on?
Oral.
Thank you. Your one minute starts now.
My son, my baby, the love of my life was stolen. His life was destroyed. Our family is destroyed by these cowards, sugar happy, thinking they're above the law. Racist-ass cops stole my son's life within fifteen seconds. Fifteen seconds. Do you know that hurts so bad to see your son being murdered by some officers when they made the wrong fucking call? My son did not have no weapon. He was not, have no altercation with them, but they chose to murder him anyway. I'm demanding that these officers be fired and held accountable for murder of my son. I know all of y'all seen the video. I know there's something you can do, but you, everybody choose not to do anything. But I promise you, as long as I live.
Mayor, that caller was disconnected because her time was up. I'll move on to the next caller. Regi, you are now unmuted. Can you please state which agenda item you are calling on? Regi?
Yeah.
Can you please state which agenda item you are calling on?
I'm calling on, I'm calling on the, um, uh, public comment.
Thank you. Your one minute starts now.
Leroy Jackson is a piece of shit. A goddamn shame that retirement is calling him to retire. It's a damn shame that he has been racist all these years. I hope to God his retirement is short and fucking sweet. He doesn't deserve a day.
Mayor, that caller appears to have disconnected himself. I'll move on to the next caller. Anna A., you are now unmuted. Can you please state which agenda item you are calling on?
General public comment.
Thank you. Your one minute starts now.
I, first I would like to comment on the vote drop boxes. Um, thank you for inserting one, but I really think we do need all five. Um, I know I'm really worried about this virus, and I'm living with at-risk individuals, and I want all of us to be able to vote safely. And of course, my neighbors in Torrance who are immunocompromised or otherwise at risk for coronavirus should be able to vote without, um, concern for their lives. Um, I'm also calling again this week to demand justice for the family and friends of Christopher DeAndre Mitchell. I want the council to fire officers Anthony Chavez and Matthew Concanon and to create a civilian oversight of the commission of the, commission of the Torrance Police Department. Um, listening to the Prop fifteen spiel was so hypocritical. You obviously don't care about oversight. If you did, you would implement, implement the civilian oversight commission of your police department. It's not that hard for you to listen and act for justice. You hold positions of power. You are representative. You are, you-
Mayor, that caller was disconnected because her time was up. I'll move on to the next caller. Andy P., you are now unmuted. Can you please state which agenda item you are calling on?
Andy Portchop?
Yes, sir. Can you please state which agenda?
Hi. I would like to talk on nine E, eight D, and the general coma, comment, oral communication.
Thank you. Your three minutes start now.
Thank you, Katie. First, I have a positive comment on eight D. I'm very happy you're spending all that four hundred thousand dollar on a storm drain pump, and that's a very good idea. So the people in the area or infrastructures or roads not going to be flooded in the next rainfall. And, um, you should get more and more money for this project because the whole infrastructure is very bad in Torrance, in my area. You had to repair water main lines twice in the past six weeks or so. Nine E, the public comment section, what you tried to modify tonight. When I started to enter the city of Torrance meeting, I had three minutes on any constant calendar items. Call it up the constant calendar item and, um, listen to it and comment it. I have three minutes on any agenda item and comment on it, and three minutes on oral communication. So thankful Pastor Curry, the rules are changed so fast now I have for all the items. If it's ten, twenty, thirty, or fifty, three minutes. I do have a bad connection here. This shows out how much you guys want to hear about me or hear of me or from me. Now, my oral communication goes to Curry, the disgusting, unspeakable behavior of him on the last city council meeting, starting a shouting match with a council member who asking him not to talk about his personal, uh, social media accounts. Patrick Curry is to lead us to a better life, not to argue with and mention somebody's private social media account that wasn't on the agenda. Pastor Curry was out of line. The social accounts or media accounts of, uh, council member Mathucci, who wants good for the people, wasn't on the agenda. Curry was off of the line to talk about on that. And Curry doesn't want good for the people. Curry wants good for the people who work for the city. His big family, the city workers and the city retirees. That's what our oral, old money goes, and that's what Pastor Curry works for. Shame on you, Pastor Curry. You are a disgusting human being. I'm ashamed to be a resident of Torrance now because you have, you are the mayor. And thank Leroy Jackson for saving you from prosecution. That was Leroy Jackson's biggest accomplishment. He saved you from prosecution. You should mention-
Mayor, that caller was disconnected because his time was up. I'll move on to the next caller. John R., you are now unmuted. Can you please state which agenda item you are calling on?
Uh, oral con- or- oral comment.
Thank you. Your one minute now.
Uh, I just like to know if the chief of police could, um, at least take the interest of what I'm telling her about the narcotic agents that work for Torrance Police Department, Fernando, Martha Gomez, Ralph Stephen Ostereiro, the next judge that was working in the Torrance court during the crimes, and Chernui Joe Maldy, who was an ex-narcotics agent that was in the house and knew about my daughter being molested and by the relatives. They never took, uh, the matters into their own hands, arrested anybody yet. Uh, I go to court December thirty-first, and I'm still being threatened. Um, you know, sometimes I don't know how to, like, go over there and talk to them when I'm being harassed. But like, when I got ran over by one of the suspects that I'm talking about, they, uh, my arms are like kind of nervous, nervous type of arms, and, um, I don't appreciate being called names at her apartment by the policeman, by the officers there. If you can call me back or try to call you back, you're-
Mayor, that caller was disconnected because his time was up. I'll move on to the next caller. Jan M., you are now unmuted. Can you please state which agenda item you are calling on?
General comment.
Thank you. Your one minute starts now.
Justice for Christopher DeAndre Mitchell. We need to fire Anthony Chavez and Matthew Concanon, and we need to establish a civilian oversight commission. We need more ballot boxes than just one. Heidi Ashtrough, what were you thinking? Just one? We were demanding for five. Thank you for Torrance for justice for continuing to fight for this, but yeah, we need more. And who was, yeah, Mathucci, what was it with your breakdown last week? I mean, I didn't even see any of that in elementary school from any of the kids, yet here you are having a breakdown and not waiting for your turn to speak. What is wrong with you? Okay, anyway, there was some, there was some guy who loved the Civil War. I don't remember who that was. W- why? So many people died in that war, and you're just going to glorify that? I mean, that's just, just some sketchy conservative, not conservative, like Confederate type of thing. So just, come on. I yield my time.
I'll move on to the next caller, Mayor. William A., you are now unmuted. Can you please state which agenda item you are calling on?
Oral communication.
Thank you. Your one minute starts now.
Good evening, everyone. So I have three comments. The first one is about education. Our children's elementary education is at risk. We went from five hours, three hundred minutes per day of instructional teaching down to forty-five minutes, the max, two hours, and the rest is for parents to work with the child at home. They need your support to ensure that the teacher and child instructional education in Torrance is, uh, even virtually, that it's a priority. Um, comment number two, let's just find a way to support our homeless population. And last comment, number three, um, police funding. They need more training to de-escalate and use of non-lethal force versus terminating a situation. That's all. I yield my time. Thank you.
I'll move on to the next caller, Mayor. Danny I., you are now unmuted. Can you please state which agenda item you are calling on? Danny, I.
General comment.
Thank you. Your one minute starts now.
I just wanted to say a big fuck you to the fucking Torrance Police Department for fucking arresting a fucking homeless person for brushing their teeth. Like, what type of fucking shit is that? And I also want to say a big fuck you to the fucking parking enforcement because they love to fucking give homeless people fucking an insane amount of fucking tickets over a fucking license plate that is fucking expired. Like, that's not their fucking job to do that. And we will get our fucking justice, and you guys will get not no fucking peace because all of you motherfuckers are fucking corrupt, sucking the fucking corporate elite fucking dick. So fuck all, all you motherfuckers.
I'll move on to the next caller, Mayor. Ann T., you are now unmuted. Can you please state which agenda item you are calling on?
Yes, public comment and, um, nine A.
Thank you. Your-
I want to-
Your two minutes start now.
Thank you. I want to stand with many of our fellow law-abiding Torrance residents that are pleased with our council and our police. I also want to say thank you Leroy Jackson for the years of devoted service. The uneducated do not understand the significance of studying the Civil War and the fight against abolition and the fight for equality for all. There has never been a perfect nation on this earth, but America is the beacon where people come to for liberty. And we're not perfect. We are still growing, just like everyone is. There's no such thing as perfect family, perfect job, or perfect church, but there's good family. There's good jobs, and there's good churches, and there's good countries, too. I would like to say that to curb police conflict, not only should we consider doing, um, extra training, but we also should, um, consider about, um, having an oversight committee on our educational institutes that would help our children understand exactly what the laws are, that you don't steal other people's property, you don't drive in stolen cars. Um, and when the police pull you aside, you give clear communication as to your actions. Um, and hopefully, things like the tragedy of Christopher DeAndre Mitchell can be subsided as we use him as an example of what we want better for our children, what we want better for our police. I'd also like to talk about nine A for this upcoming election. This is a very significant election. Integrity and honesty and virtue is very important. I believe that we should uphold our polling places, have them secure, have it so that we know that it's one vote per person and that the election boxes, if other cities want to do-
Mayor, that caller was disconnected because her time was up. I'll move on to the next caller. Lisa F., you are now unmuted. Can you please state which agenda item you are calling on?
General public comment.
Thank you. Your one minute starts now. Thank you, your one minute starts now.
Hi, it's Lisa calling in again. And I am calling to demand the respect for the Torrance Police Department and the Torrance City Council members and voice my support for them, especially since, since they must take the abuse of those calling in again and again and again for this Chris Mitchell issue that they can't do anything about. Hello? Do you read the news? Do you really know what happened? Anywho, I appreciate all that the Torrance Police Department does for the City of Torrance and its residents. And I thank you and God bless you all. I am done. Good night.
I'll move on to the next caller, Mayor. Emily E., you are now unmuted. Can you please state which agenda item you are calling on?
General comment.
Thank you, your one minute starts now.
Hey, you evil fucks. I know why you guys don't want to get justice for Christopher DeAndre Mitchell, even though you all have the power to. It's because you're racist dumb fucks. But don't you ever forget, Patrick Fury, you work for us. Don't you ever fucking forget that. And start directing funding that you waste on your trigger-happy thug police to harass homeless people. Start directing that to where it really needs to be for, to our education and to help the unhoused people of Torrance. Fuck you, Black Lives Matter.
I'll move on to the next caller, Mayor. Brian W., you are now unmuted. Can you please state which agenda item you are calling on? Brian W.?
Yes, I'm facing on oral comment.
Thank you, your one minute starts now.
Uh, Leroy J. Jackson, your failure to act on the murders of Torrance PD will go down in your legacy. Your legacy as city manager will be tainted with your inaction. Mr. Aram, I pray that you will not follow in the failures of your predecessor. I hope that you have the courage to do better, Mr. Aram. Fire and prosecute Officers Michael, Matthew Concanon, Anthony Chavez, and install a civilian oversight commission. You, as a city manager, have the power to do that, Mr. Aram. Don't listen to this crack city council and do better. I also like to speak on I of nine K. The City of Torrance needs our vote-by-mail drop boxes. We need five, one for every zip code in Torrance. Stop skimping on these vote-by-mail drop boxes and stop the voter suppression in Torrance at your hands. Give every single, give ninety thousand Torrance voters the vote-by-mail-
Mayor, that caller was disconnected because his time was up. I'll move on to the next caller. Lucas, you are now unmuted. Can you please state which agenda item you are calling on?
Seven.
Thank you, your one minute starts now.
Yeah, I have it. Anyway, I've been in similar situations. But the dude, he got his vehicle stolen. Black guy calls up like, yo, I just saw my vehicle. I just saw my vehicle. I just, I lost my vehicle. I got a stolen-
Lucas, can you please begin speaking?
Right? That's when he calls into nine one one and tells him.
Hello, sir. Torrance, um, this is an emergency. Uh, my car was stolen Friday, and I'm right behind a person that's in my car right now. Okay, where are you at? I'm located in Torrance. I'm right here on, um, coming down Carthing and Deacon.
However, having said that, we can give, we can give DeAndre the benefits of the doubt, right? Even though he had a previous record of stealing vehicles. We can give him the benefits of the doubt, but hey, you didn't know he was stolen. He was just a possession, uh, stolen property. He's bartering someone. You can give him, give him the benefits of the doubt, if you'd like to. I don't, I don't know if I will. Probably not. No, should be the final answer. But anyway, this dude is right around a stolen vehicle. Homeboy sees that his vehicle that he's right around in, and he calls the police. Please come out, and this is where, where that's gonna happen.
Mayor, that caller was disconnected because his time was up. I'll move on to the next caller. Torrance Patriot, you are now unmuted. Can you please state which agenda item you are calling on?
Nine E and public comment.
Thank you, your two minutes start now.
Okay, um, as far as, uh, nine E is concerned, I'd say keep it as it is right now, um, while we're on the Zoom calls. And, um, I did wanna thank the city council, and I wanna thank Leroy Jackson and wish him a happy retirement. And, um, I support the police. Um, we are not a racist city. Um, and I, I just wanna make sure that I, I stress that and, and that we love our police, we love our fire, and we love our safe city. And, uh, regarding, uh, Mr. Mitchell, uh, he was not obeying police commands. He was in commission of a crime. He was in a stolen vehicle. His hands kept going down, reaching for his little air rifle or whatever it was between his legs. And, um, you know, he shouldn't have put himself in that position. If he was not in a stolen car, he would have never come in contact with the police. And as far as Black Lives Matter, you know, you are, you are just a Marxist organization, and your time is coming that you will be disbanded, and your leaders will be arrested, and you will be gone. Stay strong, city council. Stay strong to our new city manager. And, uh, God bless y'all. God bless Torrance. God bless America. I stand for the flag. I kneel for my God. Thank you.
I'll move on to the next caller, Mayor. And for awareness, we have two more callers on the line for oral communications. Barbara C., you are now unmuted. Can you please state which agenda item you are calling on?
Government, public comment.
Thank you, your one minute starts now.
Well, first of all, I wanna give kudos to the city council for having to sit through all this and listen to some of the stuff that's been said. And also, I wasn't aware that you could call and demand anybody to do anything. I think requesting would be a little bit better. And for those of you who think the city council and the Torrance Police Department are not doing a good job, you could always apply for the position, and if you're not qualified for it, you always have the option to leave. Also, I think the language that's being used, if, um, this is being delayed, I think you should cut the people off at the first sound of the cursing. And, uh, I don't believe that Torrance is a racist city. I support the Torrance Police Department one hundred percent. And for those of you who have a problem with it, all you have to do is do one thing if you're pulled over. It's called comply. Just one word.
Mayor, that caller was disconnected because her time was up. I'll move on to the next caller. Nate B., you are now unmuted. Can you please state which agenda item you are calling on?
General comments.
Thank you, your one minute starts now.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that, uh, we back Torrance PD one hundred percent, and, uh, I would like to know what's going on with the defunding of Torrance PD, 'cause I don't see it on the road as often as I used to, especially the traffic division. They do a lot to keep our city safe. Also, I'd like to comment on Van S. I suppose they got repaved. Looked like they just repaved it. They didn't, uh, tear it up and, you know, smooth it out. There's still a very bad ride between, uh, Dominguez and Delano Boulevard, especially, uh, northbound. I wanna see that fixed. We pay a lot of money in our taxes. We need to get that fixed. Also, we need to get Torrance PD, the traffic division, back out on the streets doing their job. So I'd like to say, God bless, uh, the Torrance Police Department. And I wanna see our, um, our Chief of Police change our policy on CCWs.
Mayor, that caller was disconnected because his time was up. We have one final caller on the line. Jillian, you are now unmuted. Can you please state which agenda item you are calling on?
I'm calling on oral communications.
Thank you, your one minute starts now.
Hi, city council. Um, I'm calling first and foremost to demand justice for Christopher DeAndre Mitchell. Um, an oversight commission is a small, small ask. And secondly, we need ballot boxes for all Torrance residents to have access to vote. Five ballot boxes is not that hard, and it really raises the question, why don't you want Torrance residents voting when our neighbor Carson has half the registered voters and seven ballot boxes? Um, we saw the discussion of full view last Tuesday on ballot boxes, and to compromise on just one, um, really seems like a bone you're trying to throw to us, and we won't take it. We are paying attention to this. People care about this. And, uh, it's really disgrace that Torrance was the only city to reject its five ballot boxes. Um, and so I hope you do better, and we won't stop calling in.
Mayor, that caller was disconnected because her time was up, and at this time there are no other callers on the line. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, that concludes our oral communications or public comment at this time. Uh, we move on with the agenda. Actually, out of order, we're calling number ten first, the hearing. Now is the time and the place for a public hearing on Agenda Item Ten A. The Planning Commission recommends that the city council deny the appeal and adopt resolutions denying without prejudice a conditional use permit and division of law, and recommendation for denial without prejudice of the zone change. To allow the subject project on the property located in the CR zoned on the east side of Prairie Avenue, approximately one hundred feet north of one seventy-sixth Street, the, uh, Community Development Director recommends that the city council uphold the appeal and adopt a mitigated negative declaration and adopt an ordinance approving a zone change from CR to C three PP, solely commercial, precise plan, and adopt an ordinance summary for publication, and adopt resolutions approving a conditional use permit and division of law to allow the subject property, project on property located in the CR zone C three PP pending on the east side of Prairie Avenue, approximately one hundred feet north of one seventy-sixth Street. Appeal will proceed as follows. First, a presentation by staff, followed by questions from council. Next, a presentation by the appellant of a maximum of fifteen minutes, followed by questions from council. After which, members of the audience may speak regarding the proposal. Finally, a five-minute rebuttal by the proponent. Has this matter been properly advertised?
Yes, your honor.
Is there a staff presentation?
Yes, your honor. Honorable Mayor and members of the city council, good evening. I'm Oscar Martinez with the Community Development Department. I have a presentation that, uh, that covers the material contained in your agenda item tonight. The item was previously brought to your, for your consideration on December third, twenty nineteen. The item was continued indefinitely to allow the applicant additional time to work with staff on several concerns raised at the meeting related to scale, privacy, off-street parking, and traffic impacts. Live, please. This aerial photograph shows the adjacent commercial parcel to the north and single-family residences to the south and west. A four oh five freeway, which is visible to the east of the project site, which is highlighted in red. Live, please. This slide depicts the revised site plan for the project. The project has been reduced, has, the project has reduced the overall square footage by approximately twenty-two hundred square feet, and the resulting floor area ratio is zero point nine, which is within the, which is within the allowed maximum one point oh FAR for mixed-use development. With the reduction in gross building area, the southerly side yard setback has increased from five feet to eight feet. The project will continue to provide a twenty-foot front yard setback, twenty-five-foot minimum northerly side yard setback, and a hundred and fifty-foot rear yard setback. A ten-foot separation is provided between buildings one and two, and a twenty-foot separation is provided between, uh, buildings two and three, which is proposed to be developed with open space and a loading area. The project meets or exceeds the R three development standards in terms of setbacks. Live, please. This slide shows the basement-level parking garage, which has been enlarged to accommodate tandem parking along the southerly parking row for the proposed two-bedroom residential unit. In the prior design, the applicant initially proposed fifty-five parking spaces along the ramp and in the basement level. The current plan now provides ninety-two parking spaces within the basement level. The project continues to provide nineteen service parking stalls, which, twelve of which are along the north of Building One, and seven are adjacent to Building Three. Per code, senior residential units are required to provide a minimum of one space per unit, a minimum of one space for every guest, five guests, uh, I'm sorry, minimum of one space for every five units for guest parking, and one space for every two hundred square feet per commercial area. Based on the proposed project of fifty-three senior units and fifteen hundred square feet of retail space, a total of seventy-two parking spaces are required, and a hundred eleven are provided. Live, please. This slide shows an architectural rendering of the project from west, uh, along the front elevation, uh, along Prairie Avenue. Live, please. The applicant has reduced the project height from twenty-seven feet to twenty-four feet by reducing plate heights, uh, to nine feet along the first and second floors and nine feet six inches for the basement level. The slide represents the elevation for Buildings Two and Three, uh, for reference. The black dotted line above the buildings indicates the previous design height of twenty-seven feet compared to the current proposed height of twenty-four feet. Live, please. This slide shows the front elevation perspectives for Buildings One, Two, and Three. Live, please. This slide shows the south elevation for all buildings. Per staff's recommendation, the applicant has modified the south elevation for Buildings Two and Three to address concerns from the adjacent neighbors relating to scale and privacy. The balconies along the south elevation have been revised to be flush with the building's outer wall rather than encroaching into the south property, uh, south side yard setback. A lattice architectural element is also proposed in front of each balcony to provide additional privacy to the adjacent R one properties. The applicant also plans to install an eight-foot tall decorative masonry wall along the south property line with a two-foot minimum landscape planner to provide additional privacy and screening for the properties to sell. Live, please. This slide shows the, uh, rear elevations of the buildings. Live, please. This represents, this slide represents the north elevation of all buildings. Live, please. This slide, uh, shows a proposed modification to the median along Prairie Avenue in Green to allow southbound traffic into the project site, which was in response to comments received during the last hearing. The applicant has consulted with the postal works department to evaluate potential traffic impacts associated with the proposed development, including the proposed median modification. Staff has added a recommended conditional approval that the applicant modify the landscape median on Prairie Avenue to provide a sixty-foot extension with a fifty-foot turnpocket. The recommended circulation enhancement would allow southbound left turn movements from Prairie Avenue into the project driveway and eliminates the need for, uh, to make a U-turn at Prairie and one seventy-sixth Street in order to access the site. Live, please. The following photographs were taken by staff on September seventeenth, twenty twenty. The arrows represent the points of view captured in each photo. Live, please. This view is looking south on Prairie Avenue with the adjacent properties shown on the left-hand side of the, of the photo. Live, please. This view is looking southeast, looking at the project site from across the street at the northeast corner of one seventy-fifth Place and Prairie Avenue. Live, please. This view is looking east towards the project site across the street on Prairie Avenue. Live, please. This view is taken from across the street along Prairie Avenue, looking northeast towards the project site. Live, please. This photo is looking north at the, along Prairie Avenue with the subject property on the right-hand side of the photo. Live, please. This photograph is, is of the southerly neighborhood along one seventy-sixth Street. Live, please. And this is looking west across Prairie Avenue at, with the single-family residences on one seventy-fifth Place, uh, in the background. Live, please. This view is taken from the front of the property along the northerly property line, looking east towards the rear of the property. Live, please. This view is taken from the southerly property line, uh, looking east with the adjacent properties, uh, with the adjacent single-family residence property- uh, with the adjacent single-family residence properties to the south on the right. Live please. And this photograph was taken along the rear property, along the rear of the property line, uh, looking towards the west with the, uh, single-family residences along the, uh, the left-hand side of the property. Live please. In the judgment of staff, the project represents an opportunity to redevelop a longstanding vacant and underutilized lot. The applicant has revised the project multiple times to be more consistent with the height and, of the surrounding neighborhood. Since the last hearing, the applicant has reduced the height of the project from 27 feet to 24 feet, which is below the maximum height limit of the adjacent R1 properties. The project has been reduced in square footage by approximately 2,200 square feet with resulting FAR of 0.9. The project has increased the southerly side yard setback from five feet to eight feet, and has also increased the overall onsite parking by providing tandem, tandem parking stalls for the proposed two-bedroom units. Project has also been revised to provide the left turn pocket for the benefit of southbound traffic, which eliminates the need, the need for U-turn movements at Prairie and 176th Street. For these reasons, staff recommends approval of the project as conditioned. That, that, that concludes staff's presentation and is available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Uh, I'll see if my colleagues have any questions. I, uh, see no one, uh, raising their hand, so, uh, I guess we move on to the, uh, proponent? Isn't on this, or would that be the appellant, or is that the same person?
Yeah, it would be the same person.
Okay. Uh, they have 15 minutes to, uh, add, subtract, multiply, divide. Let us know what their thoughts are.
Hello, good evening.
Isaiah, good evening.
Hi, good evening, uh, members of the City Council and staff. Um, my name is Khrushen, and I'm speaking on behalf of the applicant. The applicant would like to thank the Torrance Plan Department, uh, for their efforts in reviewing and suggesting revisions to our proposed senior housing project over the past several years. Their inputs and recommendations have been invaluable in the discussion we see tonight. As a result of their guidance, we have a two-story senior housing project that fits into the scale of the surrounding commercial and residential neighborhood. We just want to say that the property has been vacant for some time, and will be a great opportunity to develop an underutilized lot. We believe that our senior citizen community needs a housing, so proposing a 53-unit senior residential housing will be a great opportunity. We've been working on the planning department for almost two years, and we did revise our project multiple times. Our project scale has been reduced from four-story to two-story residential, and from 62 units, we reduced it to 53 units. Also, the updated traffic study determined that there would be no significant impact on the surrounding environment. Um, the homeowners against our property have raised issues of minor concerns regarding the traffic, parking, and lots of privacy, such as setbacks. Um, your planning staff has responded to each of these objections with facts based on the longstanding citywide planning standards. We've addressed some minor, uh, some issues concerning the setbacks, which we increases from five feet to eight feet. And, um, we also addressed the parking issues by expanding on underground parking. Previously, our design had 72 parking, but right now, we, we provided 111 parking spaces to provide tandem spaces for the two-bedroom units. So, we don't have any problem on the onsite parking as well. Um, lastly, we would like to emphasize the need for more senior housing with more than 30, 30,000 Torrance residents over the age of 65. We did a lot of concessions for this project, and we believe that this is much-needed project for the senior residents in the city of Torrance. Again, we just want to have this opportunity to provide potential benefits for our community, for our senior citizen community, and the city of Torrance. We really do appreciate your consideration on this matter. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your presentation. Uh, is there, uh, any questions from my colleagues? I, I don't see any. I see, uh, Councilmember Goodrich has a question.
Yes, question for staff. Just wondering, uh, for as long as I can remember, anyway, this lot has been, uh, vacant, and, uh, the only use for it in any given year is, uh, pumpkin patch and, uh, Christmas tree lot, and, uh, hasn't been the most attractive-looking lot. So, uh, if, if you could, uh, tap into your history and, and please, uh, how long has it been since this lot has been used for anything other than that? How long has it been vacant?
Councilman Danny.
Did you know, Oscar? Uh, Danny, go ahead.
Honored Councilman, uh, Danny Santana, Community Development Director. This parcel has been vacant, uh, since it was a leftover piece when the freeway was expanded. Um, our accessible aerials show that it's been in the current present state for many, many years, and its most recent use has been limited to essentially a, um, a holiday tree lot and pumpkin patch. Uh, that's really been the only active utilization of the, of the property.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Chen.
Uh, yes, this is to, uh, the staff. I noticed that the, uh, it's like the, uh, uh, there's the 50-foot southbound left turn pocket, I noticed, uh, so you could turn into the housing project. How easily is it that a car traveling northbound would, you, uh, going through that, oh, turn in, um, accidentally? Is, uh, is, the way I saw it, it looks like either way you could kind of get in.
Councilman Danny Santana, again, uh, that design for the median modifications was, uh, developed by the applicant's traffic engineer and reviewed by the city's Public Works Department Traffic Engineering Division. Uh, I do not believe it would be easily achieved, um, considering the existing lanes on northbound Prairie. Uh, it would be difficult to do so. There are additional, uh, left turn pockets for 175th Place and 175th Street to the south and to the north respectively of this, uh, southbound, uh, to east turning movement. Um, and the city's Public Works Department will verify that it's implemented correctly.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, just the way it's drawn right now, my concern is, you know, either way you could enter that, and I don't know if there's a way you could prevent it, uh, uh, from the head-on collision, both, both sides turning right into there.
Your concern is noted, Councilman. Uh, I'm sure both Community Development and Public Works will do everything possible to avoid such a circumstance.
Thank you. I don't have any more questions, Mayor.
Thank you. Anybody else? Councilmember Matucci.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a question, uh, if, if we've ever, if the applicant ever considered doing a lower density in this particular proj- project, uh, this property at any given time. Uh, the, I mentioned it last time about the, my concern about having commercial in the front area, those 1,500 square feet, the commercial, uh, it's not much the square footage, but the amount of traffic that it could actually create onto the property, and, um, and the fact that it's the same driveway, and possibly the same shared parking, if I understand correctly, the guest parking is what's being shared with the, uh, commercial, uh, parking. Um, my understanding is that the commercial is needed to get the higher, uh, density. Um, do we have an analysis as to what that lower density might look like? Uh, is it half the size, uh, and are they like the townhome style, uh, that can be built on there? So in other words, if we didn't have the commercial on there, um, could we go with like a townhome style of a project as a, as an example?
Councilman Danny Santana, the Community Development Director. Uh, in order to pursue such a path, uh, it would need to be a different zone than what is currently proposed. Uh, the subject request is for senior condominiums, which is conditionally permitted in the C3 zone. A non-age-restricted product would not. So we would have to pursue a different type of zoning classification, whether it be, um, a residential townhome or a multifamily zoning like R3, which is typical of apartment-style development, whether they're stacked or side-by-side units. Uh, that would, uh, a standalone residential project, um, would also result in less units, and I think that's part of your, um, part of the direction or path you would like to proceed in. Um, but, uh, the applicant has never proposed such a concept to staff. Because the properties to the north are zoned C3, um, that is one of the reasons why the applicant has proceeded in this path, to avoid, um, a situation where it would be an inconsistent zoning between the south and the north. Uh, that doesn't mean that those circumstances don't exist in the city, uh, but the applicant was looking to apply for a request that was consistent with the C3 zone that exists to the north, which is why they proceeded in a, uh, senior, um, uh, senior condominium residential direction. Uh, and then one point of clarification, although the project does currently allow for the commercial spaces to be shared for additional guest parking, the project is presently providing all the required guest spaces, uh, within the, uh, the underground parking garage, uh, itself.
Okay. All right, so, I mean, um, this type of square footage, what kind of, uh, what kind of ratio would you have, let's say that you went to a low-density townhome-style project? Would that pretty much cut the project in half the size?
Councilman, if you were to do strictly residential, limited to .6, and assuming an average, uh, unit square footage of 1,200 square feet, it would bring the total down to 36 units.
Thirty-six units. All right, I, 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 I am concerned about the density and the fact that there's commercial in the front with a, uh, and from what I understand, it's only one driveway going in and out. But I'm reading this correct, right?
That is correct.
Okay. And I do appreciate the applicant for, you know, bringing projects like this, you know, we do need, uh, to develop these pieces of land. I just, again, I'm just concerned about the, the density, but I'm looking forward to hearing what my colleagues have to say. Thank you.
Councilmember Goodrich, followed by Councilmember Griffin.
Yes, for staff, uh, Councilmember Matucci raises a good point regarding the commercial. Uh, you said that the, about 1,500 feet, which, uh, is, is fairly small in, in the broad scope of the project. Um, just wondering about the, uh, the traffic trips possibly generated from just the commercial use alone, and then also flipping that around, is it possible that the avoided trips by having a mixed-use development? And, uh, what I mean by that is the residents that live there not having to drive off-site but being able to go there, is it possible that, uh, that could be mitigated or even, uh, end up being a wash?
Councilman Danny Santana, again, uh, in reviewing, uh, the traffic, uh, table, Table 5.1 from their latest traffic iteration, a total of 52 trip-ins are envisioned for the 1,500-square-foot commercial retail space. Uh, depending on the nature of the use, uh, because this is a senior development, if it included a, a medical or a convenience service, um, uh, that likely would reduce the number of trip-ins, uh, from the residential component out of the project.
Anything else? Councilmember, uh, Griffin?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, for the, uh, applicant, is the parking assigned to, uh, specific units, or is it a free, free-for-all parking?
Uh, hi, my name is Khrushen, the applicant. Um, so, yeah, so since we already provided, um, um, enough, um, parking spaces for all of the, um, um, units, it could be, um, assigned for all of the tandems as well.
It could be assigned, but it's not required to be assigned, staff?
Yes.
Councilman Danny Santana, our code requires that they be dedicated to the units that they're intended to serve. So, if the council had any concerns, staff could get working on a crafted condition that would more specifically address any concerns that the council may have.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and just for the record, and as I've said before, I'm not a fan of stack parking. Um, the, um, in fact, this is a senior, uh, project. Uh, what, um, protections will there be in this to make sure that, uh, the property is, uh, owned and, and lived in by seniors?
Councilman, there's conditions of approval that require that the CCNRs for the project include a deed restriction that limits who the occupants can be. Uh, we're flipping through the, uh, through the staff report as we speak, attempting to find what condition number that is. Uh, but it usually specifically states that it has to be at least one individual of, say, a couple, has to be 55, uh, and it is a requirement in the CCNR.
And that's in perpetuity, or is that, uh, per your number of years, or?
Good question, Councilman. Because it is a condition of approval, in order to obtain an amendment of that restriction, uh, they would either have to secure some sort of legislative action voiding those requirements statewide, or come before, um, a public body here at the city of Torrance to request to modify that requirement.
And what would be the penalty, uh, if, uh, non-seniors were permitted to purchase and/or live in this, uh, these units? And who would enforce that?
Uh, the enforcement would happen through the city's Code Enforcement Division. Uh, the penalty could involve, um, uh, up-to prosecution by the city prosecutor's office for non-compliance. Uh, but in terms of, uh, financial penalty, I do not have that information.
Um, the other concern I have is, uh, it's great that you have now, uh, an option for southbound traffic, uh, entering into the project, uh, but there's no way for anyone exiting the property to exit to the southbound direction. They would have to go northbound, and the first two, uh, possible left turns that they could make are both no-U turns, so it's almost completely impossible for someone to return or, or head off of Prairie in the southbound direction from this property without taking a considerable detour. Uh, I'm just wondering if there's any possible workarounds for that possi- for, for that situation? That'll, that'll increase traffic problems with the left turns and so forth.
Councilman Danny Santana, again, uh, we do not have any alternative workarounds to that. Uh, uh, vehicle exiting the property would have to follow the restrictions at the various intersections, and you are correct, they may need to go, um, uh, either westbound in one of the residential, uh, single-family blocks, or further north. I believe the first opportunity would be at Redondo Beach Boulevard in Prairie.
Yeah, I drove through the area today, and I, I had a hard time without going through residential area, um, getting back to going southbound on Prairie without taking an extended detour. And, um, I'm not sure what the real traffic flows are likely to be, but I would imagine that many of the people that would potentially live in this, uh, property would want to go south into Torrance. Uh, and, uh, I just wish there was a, a way that we could figure out how we could get traffic to be able to, um, maneuver to the south without adding significant travel to do so. Uh, so, um, sounds like we don't have a solution for that, but it's a, it's a big concern for me. Um, that's all for right now.
Um, Councilman, uh, Colani.
Thank you. I just had a quick question. Um, this was obviously quite a lot of material to look through. I couldn't find anything, and forgive me if I overlooked it, regarding owner occupied versus someone 55 and over purchasing and using it as a rental.
There, uh, Councilwoman Danny Santana, there is no condition that restricts that. Um, that has not been a consistent, uh, condition that the city has applied to, I believe, any other residential project.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
No further questions from the council or either staff? No further questions from the council, or either staff, or for the applicant? Then, uh, we'll take public comment on this hearing. There will be a designated thirty-minute time period dedicated to this matter. Each speaker will have up to two minutes to speak. If any members of the public want to speak on this matter, we ask you to please call the public comment hotline now at three one oh six one eight two four zero four. City Council Rules of Order, section six point four E, provides that speakers can only speak once, and any speaker that attempts to speak a second time on any item will be disconnected. Uh, if you're not speaking on this topic or on-topic, uh, you will get a warning to stay on-topic, and if you do not speak on-topic, or if you go off-topic one more time, you forfeit the remainder of your time, and we will move on to the next caller pursuant to City Council Rules of Order, section six point five and section six point seven, B three and B four. So, uh, and if there are no speakers waiting before the thirty-minute period has elapsed, we will close the public comment portion of the hearing. Is there anyone at our call center called in?
Yes, Mayor, we do have some callers on the line. I'll begin to patch them in.
Okay, thank you.
Ally P., you are now unmuted. Can you please, or I'm sorry, you'll have two minutes to speak, and your time will start now. Thank you. Ally P.? Mayor, I'm gonna disconnect that caller since it doesn't appear anyone's on the line.
Okay.
Ally, hi, your two minutes start now.
Hi, uh, so first of all, I would like to first say that I am supporting this project. I think this is a great opportunity, a, a project on one seventy-sixth and Prairie. Uh, currently, the project is an urban blighted, uh, lot, attracting, you know, not a lot of good things. So the proposal is a very good opportunity to add a lot of senior housing. And the new developer, Pacon Corporation, downsized their project and added a lot of parking, which personally, I think that's great, and, you know, that, that eventually led me to support the project. So, uh, um, I believe, you know, what the prop, what the land is being used for now, as you guys said, uh, pumpkin patches and holiday tree selling, I really believe that adds absolutely no opportunity to the, to the city. And just seeing the elderly have a good place to live is really great, you know, going through the great city of the, it's very close to a lot of areas. Um, overall, it would be great, uh, to see it, and, you know, one thing we should also keep in mind, too, that this, this council online might not be the best opportunity for the elderly to give their perspective to it. So I'm, I would like to be here to speak on their behalf, because it, it is kind of difficult for, you know, for instance, my grandmother or my grandfather would have absolutely had no idea, so I'm here speaking on their behalf, because I'm able to, I'm more tech savvy than them. Um, overall, you know, this, this project, it has been, I would say, you know, there's no develop, on, development on it, and there hasn't been any development on it for many years. So just seeing that the city go into a more smart development direction really will show that, you know, the city is really utilizing their, their general plan, and really going for great improvements for the city to help, to help the city in the future. Um, also, I believe that if this plan doesn't get, uh, approved, I believe the seniors will be pretty.
Mayor, that caller was disconnected because his time was up. I'll move on to the next caller.
Thank you.
Andy P., you are now unmuted. Your two minutes start now.
Hello, everyone. My opinion on this project is, uh, not how high the buildings are, or not how, uh, not private, and the neighbors don't get privacy. The problem is with this, just like with the whole South Bay and the city of Torrance, now they're overbuilding. Too many people here, too many houses, too many buildings, too many apartments. And then you guys just switch around, changing the zoning, changing this and that, just to have these builders make their money scams, or money building, or money-making opportunities. And, um, I also would like to add to the concerns about this project. For old people, wouldn't be needed more public transportation, and old people is not so, uh, quick drivers, if they still drive, how they gonna get in and out of that place? And it's very hard, it's just like Mr. Griffith said, that the traffic situation is that. And the other big concern is that this proves that this is just a money-making opportunity for somebody built on this land, and nothing else in mind, just making money, selling off this property next to a freeway, and making money, and overbuilding our community. Our infrastructure, our water line, our sewer line, our electric power grid is not built for anything more than it's already cannot handle. Remember, power outages, problems with the aging, uh, water and sewer lines, just think about it, what the hell's you gonna, uh, what else you gonna cook up to this aging old system? So that's why I'm against this thing, selling these units for people, and all they're gonna get there, problems with traffic, problems with sewer water and other services.
Mayor, that caller was disconnected because his time was up. At this time, it looks like we have one more caller on the line for this item. Beverly, you are now unmuted. Beverly, your two minutes start now.
Mayor and City Council, uh, I have some major concerns about this. Uh, traffic is a major concern. If you've ever been, and we can't go with COVID time, but in normal times, that intersection, Prairie, is backed up sometimes all the way back to one eighty-second Street, all the way up to Artesia. And you're gonna have people trying to get in and out of their apartments, or of their condos. And, uh, my other concern is, okay, you say you're doing stack parking, and you may assign the spaces. Well, just because it's a one-bedroom condo doesn't mean there won't be two cars. You know, not everybody can afford the two-bedroom condos, so they may have two cars, but, you know, I just don't see how it's gonna work that well for seniors, and are there elevators and stuff? Because a lot of seniors, you know, they're not that mobile. I mean, if you're trying to accommodate seniors in this community, then you really need to be looking at senior needs, not just, how can we get some more money tax dollars for the city by having some property tax? Um, I don't think it's a good project, and I'm against it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else?
Yes, this is the call center. It, it looks like there are a couple more callers that are calling in right now to the call center, so I'll continue to patch them in for the, up to the thirty minutes.
Okay.
Lisa F., you are now unmuted. Your two minutes start now.
Yes, hi, I am calling on the item ten A. And as a senior that does not drive, because I cannot see that well, and I don't really have a working car, I think it's a great opportunity to, um, allow seniors to be able to live somewhere else in town. I, um, fully support this, uh, proposal, and I'm happy that there are things for seniors being done, because I don't think that there's quite enough things in Torrance for seniors. Um, so this, this proposal, I, I approve of this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else?
Yes, Mayor, I believe that some additional callers are being patched in, if you don't mind holding a moment, please.
No, go ahead.
Thank you. Reza, you are now unmuted. Your two minutes start now.
Hello, my name is Reza. I just wanted to speak about this project. You know, obviously, this is, uh, currently just a vacant site. Personally, I've driven past it pretty much every day on my way to work, on my way home, and it's just honestly always filled with homeless, graffiti, and the fact that they're proposing a two-story senior citizen housing, two-story, the same size as the, they made it as small as the houses next door. I think it's just ridiculous if the city did not approve this. I personally know many seniors in the city who would be completely outraged, and I know many of them would want to be here today, but unfortunately, this interface is not really for the elderly class of people. And basically, this site, it's, it's just ridiculous. I think that if the city were to deny this, because this is senior citizen housing, that's literally, you're gonna create homes for our elders, the elders that we cherish in this community. And all these complaints that are coming in, I don't even understand, they're not even real complaints. They're complaining about the solar, solar panels cannot handle it, the energy system. You know, in reality, this is not true. All these complaints that are coming in, I haven't heard a single solidified complaint. They provided all this parking, maybe in the past, yeah, the project was a little too big. Now, I can really look at this, and I can say this is something that's very good for the city. I mean, especially all these seniors, I don't know how we could deny the rights of our great seniors, our elders, the right to live in our city, especially when this project is just completely compliant with everything else, with the surrounding neighborhoods.
Mayor, that caller was disconnected because his time was up. I'll move on to the next caller.
Thank you.
Andrea S., you are now unmuted. Your two minutes begin now.
Hi, I'm just concerned, um, with this lot. I understand that it is for only senior citizens, and I would like to say that we already have a lot of housing for seniors. Um, I don't mean any disrespect by that, but I feel like there should be at least maybe twenty to thirty percent, um, available for low-income individuals and families of any age. Um, I think we already do, we just need more affordable housing in Torrance. I don't think it's fair to say that people should move out, um, or live somewhere else. You know, we should be inviting more people of diverse backgrounds, um, to come here and enjoy the city. Uh, I know that, like, I, I'm a Torrance resident, I've lived here for twenty, twenty-one years, and I really appreciate having a place, like, living in the city, and enjoying the QSD, and et cetera, et cetera. So I just want, um, to have more opportunities for other people like me that have enjoyed Torrance. So, yeah, I'm just encouraging you to have more affordable housing, because otherwise we wouldn't have this homelessness crisis. Um, yeah, and, and, yeah, just, just build more affordable housing. Please make sure that these, this building, if you're gonna approve it, at least has, like, thirty percent affordable housing units for low-income families, or individuals that aren't necessarily seniors.
Mayor, that caller has disconnected herself, so I'll move on to the next caller.
Please.
Paul M., you are now unmuted. Your two minutes start now.
Good evening, uh, Mayor and City Council, thank you for the call. Uh, in presenting this, I, I am a fifteen-year resident here in Torrance, and my wife is a forty-five-year resident, and we live actually just a block and a half away. Um, we do feel that that's underutilized lots, um, being proposed at the senior living, um, area would, would be a great, uh, improvement, and it's, it's much needed for seniors. Uh, I was thinking about bringing my, my parents here to the area, and they can't afford to buy a single-family residence, so to be able to purchase something in a shared, uh, community like a senior housing would be a much better solution. Um, it would be nice to see if some of those condos, if they are condos, would be assigned for affordable, uh, rental, possibly for seniors. And then also for traffic, um, having seniors pull into that parking area, which I think it's great that they put underground parking, um, it'd be great to have maybe a turn-in lane, I don't know if there's enough setback to be able to have a, a drop-off pickup, um, lane adjacent to the Prairie on the entranceway, or have a loading zone for, uh, senior pickups, uh, that could be done within their underground parking. Uh, but anyways, I, I do, uh, commend the developer, uh, making this pencil out with, um, half-units going from four stories to two stories, um, and also, uh, providing so much underground parking, uh, to alleviate the, the traffic problem. Fifteen hundred square feet is really a small deli, it's, to me, it's not concerning. Uh, again, I live in the immediate vicinity, and I think it's great to be able to provide an amenity for the people who, who'll be living there, if they can go down and, and get, uh, medication, like, uh, Tylenol, or, or certain, um, deli-type of food, I think that'd be great, because then it'll be reduced, the traffic load, um, onto the city streets by them being able to get, uh, food downstairs. Thanks again, have a good one.
Thank you, sir.
I'll move on to the next caller, Mayor.
Thank you.
Danny, you are now unmuted. Your two minutes begins now.
Hi, uh, can you all hear me?
We can hear you, yes.
Okay, hi. Uh, I wanna first off by saying that, uh, I think that this proposed project is a great improvement to the city, um, and affordable housing is, uh, is really important, um, and, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, uh, senior housing is, is really important, because, you know, there's not that many senior housing around. One that was just built in Redondo, uh, and that's the only one I can think of, with a few other ones. Uh, I personally believe that if this project is not approved, I know many elders in the city who would be outraged that, you know, that the city voted against affordable, uh, uh, voted against senior housing. Uh, I think that's really important to the city. The, the plot is vacant, and I, I drive on Prairie every day, and sometimes at night, I see some hooligans on there doing stuff that they shouldn't be. I've seen people graffiti on there, I have seen police on there. And I just wanna bring that to the attention of the city, because I, I think it's great that a developer is coming and trying to, you know, redevelop a part of the city, and it could be really beneficial to the city, you know, having that development there. I personally don't think traffic would be that great of an issue, considering how the, if it's for elderly, they wouldn't leave their house that much. I mean, that's just to say, but, you know, uh, I, overall, you know, approving this project would, would be great for the city, because it would mean that there is more places for people to stay, stay, and there is a housing shortage in California right now. So really rejecting housing projects is, is not something that cities should be doing right now. I, I think it's, I think it's really important, I think the developer is stepping in the right direction, and trying to really improve the city of Torrance, and, you know, being a resident of the South Bay for, uh...
Mayor, that caller was disconnected because his time was up. I'll move on to the next caller.
Thanks.
David E., you are now unmuted. Your two minutes start now.
Hi, everyone. Uh, uh, I certainly have mixed feelings about it. Uh, I, uh, certainly would miss the, uh, pumpkin patch and, uh, Christmas tree lot that has been there for so many years. Uh, grew up in South Bay and Torrance, and, uh, I, I, uh, the other mixed feeling I have is that, uh, as a kid, uh, it was always wonderful having some open space where you could go ride your bike around in the dirt, or things like that. So whether, whatever you decide to do with this particular property, uh, keep that in mind in terms of, uh, the, the idea of having just some undeveloped open land for, uh, boys to be boys, uh, kids to be kids, uh, is something, uh, that brought a little bit more of a rural feel to, uh, this community when it was, you know, where I, I, I'm reticent to, to see some of that continue to depart. But in any case, uh, it does sound like a good design. Uh, I think, uh, in terms of traffic, there would probably be a minimal impact. Um, again, I think, uh, senior probably wouldn't leave the location very often. If the commercial was there to serve the seniors in that community, then that, that seems like that would be helpful as well. Being able to turn left on to Artesia Boulevard, and then go down to, uh, Hawthorne Boulevard, and then continue south into Torrance, a workaround. I guess another way would be to not have, uh, uh, instead of having a, a median, uh, turn lane, just have double-yellow lines, uh, so that people could make a left turn out of the property, but I think that would create some traffic issues, uh, at certain times of the day. Perhaps that may not be the best solution, allowing, uh, for a senior, uh... Perhaps that may not be the best solution, allowing, uh, for a senior, uh...
Mayor, that caller was disconnected because his time was up. I'll move on to the next caller.
Thank you.
Sandy A., you are now unmuted, your two minutes start now.
Hi, hi, uh, Honorable Mayor and City Council, um, I have mixed feelings about this too. Um, it's great that you wanna put senior housing in there, however, the ingress and the egress into traffic, um, you know, I, Councilwoman Colani first made a, a, a good, uh, um, question in that who's to say that a fifty-five-year-old can't rent it and then sub-rent it, or sub-let it, or whatever, if somebody else is younger? And, um, I think you would have to figure out how to make that not be. But, um, I'm fifty-five, and if I went in there, and, you know, I'm still driving, but as, you know, you get older, sometimes your driving, um, not mine, but, uh, driving skills, uh, tend to deteriorate. And I'm just worried with all the traffic that, you know, that, that intersection with the freeway entrance and everything else, once this COVID is over, it's gonna be a nightmare. And I'm afraid there's gonna be accidents, there's some of these seniors who still do drive, um, you know, it, it's gonna be a problem. Um, you would probably have to figure out some way with the traffic, um, with the, you know, maybe changing the traffic, uh, lanes and everything to accommodate it, so that, you know, there won't be that problem. Um, so that, that's just my two cents, and, and, um, also, elevators, you know, gotta really, um, consider people with disabilities and what it would entail for them to be able to park and get in and out easily with wheelchairs and things like that. So, um, being disabled myself...
Mayor, that caller was disconnected because her time was up. I'll move on to the next caller.
Thank you.
Jack, you are now unmuted, your two minutes begin now.
Hello, City Council, a couple points here, um, since this was, since this development was intended for the elderly, and the, uh, development butts up right next to the four oh five freeway, and we all know that, you know, pre-COVID, four oh five freeway is very active. So has anyone questioned the particulate density that might affect seniors? You know, seniors may have emphysema or other breathing conditions. It's probably not the best place, uh, for that kind of usage, anyway. So I think there's health concerns that haven't been addressed, or I haven't heard. Secondly, I would say if, if there's a traffic issue, I really would not want to see, you know, the city, uh, follow a knee-jerk response and decide to plop a, uh, you know, a, a traffic light at one seventy-six or in the op, you know, on the northbound side, or, you know, or then stick another traffic light at one seventy-fifth or something like that to impede a heavily, uh, traveled, uh, street like Prairie, but, you know, to mitigate problems for the elderly. So it's a mixed blessing. Anyway, that's it, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
I'll move on to the next caller, Mayor. Ryan, you are now unmuted, your two minutes begin now.
Hi, yes, thank you so much for the time. Um, I am actually opposed to this particular project. Um, I live in the general vicinity of the area, and I can tell you that I have seen accidents occur from people trying to make the U-turn. The four oh five south entrance on Artesia, um, actually draws a lot of traffic. The gas station and car wash draws a lot of traffic. And with the development of this project, you're only going to increase the amount of cars trying to make a U-turn to enter the particular, um, proposed project site. Um, I implore you to not approve the project for the safety of the community, for the safety of all the vehicles that travel on our, uh, Prairie. Um, and even though it would be, uh, developing undeveloped land, again, I think the risk is too great for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, this is the call center, I believe that there's one more caller being patched in. You don't mind holding a moment, please, we have six more minutes left in the thirty-minute period?
No problem.
Uh, Mayor, I was just made aware that that caller hung up, and we do not have anyone else on the line at this time. Thank you.
Okay, well, if there's no more speakers waiting before the thirty-minute period has elapsed, uh, I'll ask for a motion to, uh, close the public hearing. Councilwoman Colani? I didn't hear you.
Turn on item ten A., please.
Thank you. I think Councilwoman, uh, Ashcraft already had up two.
I will second that, yes.
Thank you, thank you. Is our clerk here?
Ryan, are you on the line? Oh, my apologies, I was having technical difficulties.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, motion by, uh, Councilwoman Colani, followed by a second by Councilperson, uh, Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mayor.
Close the public hearing.
Yes. Roll call vote, Councilmember Ashcraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Chen?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodrich?
Aye.
Councilmember Griffith?
Yes.
Councilmember Colani?
Yes.
Councilmember Matucci?
Yes.
Mayor Fury?
Yes.
Your Honor, that motion carried unanimously.
All right, um, now it's time for the, uh, council to make a decision. I, I, I'll start off saying, I never thought anything would ever get proposed in that lot there that would, that would even come close to, uh, complying with, uh, our codes. Uh, and the last time, uh, as my notes indicate, uh, I was concerned with the balconies, because, uh, they were overhanging the neighbors. Uh, the set-aside was only five foot, uh, they have moved those to eight foot, and, uh, uh, the, uh, flare ratio now is, uh, point nine. Uh, so, uh, and the height, uh, bringing down the property from twenty-seven to twenty-four feet, and then adding the parking, because that was one of the things, I have lots of asterisks on my notes there, parking, 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 parking. And, uh, so I think they certainly tried to comply with everything that we were discussing before. Um, anybody else on the council? Councilwoman Ashcraft first, followed by Councilmember Chen, followed by, uh, Councilmember Matucci.
Thank you, um, a lot of material, I read through ninety-nine percent of the whole thing, probably a hundred percent. And I talked with Mr. Santana yesterday, uh, regarding this, because I noticed the notation that twenty sixteen is, is when, uh, this developer started talking to community development. And I was on council then, but it didn't, uh, come, as far as I know, to commission. And he told me that, um, it was because they've been working to come up with a solution from that point till this time. So they've had a lot of reiterations of this development. And because I was not involved, um, in December, I wasn't on council, I, I read all the comments, and I read commission notes, and everybody's comments, so I saw that, um, everything that I could see has been fulfilled, so far as bringing the heights down, uh, the far is, is lower than it needs to be, balconies are flush, the traffic issue has a turning pocket, parking has gone from seventy-two spots to a hundred and eleven. Um, and I think a big deal was, was the height of the buildings also, starting at four stories, going down to two, and the height being even a little less than the neighboring, uh, R-one lots, what they're required to have. Um, I drove by it a couple of times, I'm familiar with that, because of the Christmas Tree Lot and the Pumpkin Patch. Uh, I know people will miss those if it's gone, but, uh, as far as I can see now, I'm in support of this. We do need senior housing, and I, I think with that piece of property that's been vacant for so long, um, and it's a tough piece of property to fill, I think senior housing is a good thing. I think they've fulfilled the requirements that have been asked of them, and, um, I'm ready to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Chen, followed by Matucci, followed by Goodrich.
Thank you, Mayor, um, I looked at this, I know I was on the council when this first came up, at least for me, it was the first time. Uh, it looks like, uh, they've met all the requirements, and, and it looks like, uh, I know they have. I'm not as concerned about the not having the ability to turn left out of this project. That's because, you know, when, uh, my mother's driving, uh, I don't want her to turn left, I want her to turn right all the time. And I think it's actually, to me, it's actually safer, personally, I, I, so I don't have an issue with that. Uh, for a lot of callers who called in, uh, asking about elevators, it's just, there are elevators, like, it's in the details there, you look at it. And, uh, I just do, I have one go-back question, if I could at least make, see the staff. There's a lot of the callers come in, or either they're for or against it. Seems like they're mixing the term low-income housing and senior housing. I just wanna get a, a quick clarification, I care, if I could, Mayor, to the staff. What, um, in terms of requirements, is there any difference that the staff can clarify for me? Because I don't know if, um, some of the concerns people had was, uh, uh, would help in terms of, uh, because I don't see, I didn't see this as low...
This is market rate, this, now, this is market rate, this is not low income. And, and you, and the other thing we heard tonight was elderly versus senior. Uh, you know, a senior housing is fifty-five and over. New Horizons has been here for thirty-five years, forty years, and that's a senior housing, um, project there. Uh, it, it's, and, you know, it's, of course, they ask for the elevators and worry about those things, but, but one of the things that always gets me is, well, I heard it so many times, is that we are doing this. And, and the public should know, we are not building any houses. Uh, somebody has a property, and they, they have an absolute right as a property owner to do something with it, whether they use it as a pumpkin patch, or they, uh, build a hotel, uh, build a, uh, five-story building, as long as they get permission of the community. So that's what the owner of the property has done, is, you know, gone through the process, uh. But it is market rate, and, and some people confuse that. The other thing is, uh, when, uh, Councilwoman Colani asked a question about, uh, uh, you know, can it be rented out? Uh, New Horizon has properties that are rented out too, but in the CCNRs, you have to be fifty-five to live there, uh, not just to own it. So, uh, that clears that up. So if there's somebody goes in there and buys it for their parent, and allows them to reside in it, you can buy it at age twenty-five, as long as whoever's gonna be living there is over the age of fifty-five.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
I'm sorry, Councilmember...
That's okay, yeah, yeah, it was just that a lot of people were, were talking about low-income housing, I just wanna make sure that's clear, that this is senior housing, okay?
Right, and, and it's not our project, is it? Councilmember, uh, Matucci, followed by Councilmember Goodrich.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I too, I wanna express, you know, uh, my gratitude for a developer wanting to come in and, and develop these, uh, properties like this. I, I do have, uh, obviously, my concerns about the density. Uh, I guess if, if we were hypothetically to go with a no-commercial onsite and bring down the FAR uh, to, uh, thirty-six units, which, that, to me, is a lot more palatable than the fifty-three units, um, could they, could there still be restrictions as far as senior housing? I, I mean, I love the idea of building more, uh, senior housing, uh, it, it does free up some of the other units in town for other people. Um, but again, um, the density that I'm seeing now, with, combined with that commercial, is a big concern of mine, especially with that same driveway. Um, so can we, can we put those restrictions if we were to go with a thirty-six-unit project?
Uh, Councilman Danny Santana, uh, the council could make such a motion. It would not guarantee that the applicant would be able to proceed with the project with those types of conditions, though. Uh, at that point, it may not be feasible for them to pursue, and they could potentially, uh, uh, file a new application, uh, for something either larger, or to have the council reconsider those types of conditions restricting their proposal.
Okay. And, you know, I just wanted to reiterate the fact that I'm not anti-development, I just, I really do feel that the fifty-three units on this particular property, and that particular intersection, which is notorious for being backed up all the time, um, I'd, I'd, I'd support a smaller project. This, to, to me, is too high-density, and that commercial element, I think, is something that we should be worried about. So that's where I'm at, thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Goodrich?
Yeah, I, I too have seen this, uh, project for many, many years, uh, just like Councilwoman Ashcraft, and, uh, at least four years here, and, uh, I think this is probably the, the best we're gonna get after several different iterations. Uh, certainly better than a vacant lot sitting there, uh, attracting, it's an attractive nuisance. And, uh, regarding the commercial property, I, I actually like that, um, mixed-use, that's what people are looking for these days, and I think it'll reduce traffic trips. One of the things I neglected to mention in my previous question and comment about that is, there's also the potential for other area residents, not just people that live at that complex, to go shop, uh, and walk over and shop at the commercial. Uh, and it's only fifteen hundred square feet, but, uh, I think we could have other avoided trips by having neighbors walk over to whatever store happens to be there, instead of hopping in their cars. So I, I, my guess is that probably ends up being a wash. Uh, regarding the, the density and reducing the number of units, um, underground parking, I know, is extremely expensive, and, uh, we've got quite a bit of parking here with that. I think if you reduce the number of units, especially to the thirty-six or whatever is being talked about, I think you're gonna lose that underground parking, because the numbers aren't gonna work. And then by doing that, you're gonna lose a lot of parking, you're gonna be facing another problem. So ultimately, I think this is the, the best that we're gonna be able to get, so I'll, I'll be supporting it.
Thank you, are there any other questions or comments by council? Seeing none, I'll take a motion. Uh, does the council wish to take action? And, uh, let me know what action it is, to deny the appeal, or to uphold the appeal. Councilmember Goodrich?
Mayor, I'll move to uphold the appeal and adopt a mitigated negative declaration, adopt an ordinance for zone change, approve an ordinance summary for publication, and adopt the resolutions.
Councilwoman Ashcraft?
I'll second that.
Your Honor, would you like a number and title for the ordinance?
I think we need that to make it easier, yeah, and, uh, we'll incorporate it in the motion.
Okay, this is ordinance number thirty-eight eighty-three, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Torrance, California, amending Division Nine of the Torrance Municipal Code to reclassify a certain property in the City of Torrance located on the east side of Prairie Avenue, approximately one hundred feet north of one seventy-sixth Street, APN four zero eight eight dash zero zero two dash zero two one, from CR, Restricted Commercial District, to C three dash PP, fully commercial, precise plan.
Was that incorporated in your motion, uh, Councilmember Goodrich?
Yes, sir, that was incorporated to adopt ordinance thirty-eight thirty-three.
And I second that whole thing, yes.
Thank you.
Mayor, do we need a resolution number as well?
Uh, that was the, uh, ordinance number, and I believe I...
I said, do we need...
Okay, a roll call vote for the ordinance, Councilmember Ashcraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Chen?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodrich?
Aye.
Councilmember Griffith?
Yes.
Councilmember Colani?
Yes.
Councilmember Matucci?
No.
Mayor Fury?
Yes.
Your Honor, that motion carried with Councilmember Matucci voting no.
Okay, do we need, uh, the number and titles on a... Okay, do we need, uh, the number and titles on, uh, one oh one and one oh two?
Yes, Your Honor.
Resos? Okay, would you please give it to us?
Of course, this is resolution number twenty twenty dash one oh one. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Torrance, California, adopting the mitigated negative declaration and approving a conditional use permit as provided for in division nine, chapter five, article one of the Torrance Municipal Code, to allow the construction of a mixed-use development consisting of fifty-three senior residential condominium units and approximately fifteen hundred square feet of commercial area in conjunction with a zone change from CR restricted commercial to C three dash PP solely commercial district precise plan, to allow the proposed use and tentative tract map for condominium purposes on the property located in the CR zone C three dash PP pending on the east side of Prairie Avenue, approximately one hundred feet north of one seventy-sixth Street, APN four zero eight eight dash zero zero two dash zero two one. And the second is resolution number twenty twenty dash one oh two, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Torrance, California, adopting a mitigated nega- negative declaration and approving a tentative trap, tract map for condominium purposes as provided for in division nine, chapter two, article twenty-nine of the Torrance Municipal Code, in conjunction with a conditional use permit to allow mixed-use development consisting of fifty-three senior residential units and fifteen hundred square feet of commercial area and a zone change from CR restricted commercial to C three dash PP solely commercial precise plan on property located in the CR zone, C three dash PP zone pending on property located in the CR zone on the east side of Prairie Avenue, approximately one hundred feet north of one seventy-sixth Street, APN four zero eight eight dash zero zero two dash zero two one.
Do I have such a motion? Thank you.
Move to adopt resolution, move to adopt resolutions twenty twenty one oh one and one oh two.
I second.
Thank you.
Roll call vote, Councilmember Ashcraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Chen?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodrich?
Hi.
Councilmember Griffith?
Yes.
Councilmember Kalani?
Yes.
Councilmember Matucci?
No.
Mayor Fury?
Yes.
Your Honor, that motion carried with Councilmember Matucci voting no.
All right, thank you. We're going to take our, uh, two-hour recess, uh, three hours into this, uh, meeting, so, uh, we'll be back in five or ten minutes. Thank you for your patience.
All right, we're back from our recess called a meeting back to order. And the next item on the agenda is our consent calendar. Do any council members wish to pull any items listed on your consent calendar for separate discussion? I see no hands raised, therefore I'll take a motion to approve the consent calendar in its entirety. Councilman McLeone.
Motion to approve the consent calendar in its entirety.
Councilmember Chen.
I will second that.
Roll call vote, councilmember Ashcraft.
Yes.
Councilmember Chen.
Yeah.
Councilmember Goodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Griffiths.
Yes.
Councilmember Kalani.
Yes.
Councilmember Matucci.
Yes.
Mayor Fury.
Yes.
Your Honor, that motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, we're now moving on to item nine, nine A, is from the city manager to provide a COVID-19 recovery update and to discuss and consider options for responding to orders from the county of Los Angeles and the state of California. From our city manager.
Yes, Your Honor, this is Leroy Jackson. Staff returning to your honorable body to provide you with an update on the COVID-19 recovery effort and to allow the council to discuss and consider taking any whatever actions they deem appropriate for responding to the orders to the county and the state of California with regards to COVID-19. LA County still remains in tier one, meaning that there continues to be widespread transmission of the virus in the county and the number of hospitals, although the number of hospitalizations continues to decline. And I wanted to stop here, Ram, my indication today was that that's even more positive, right, at the time?
Yes, sir, this LA County has met the threshold to go from purple to red, and if we can maintain the same numbers for the next 14 days, we'll be able to open additional sectors, including indoor shopping as well as fitness centers, all indications.
Very positive direction. Again, it's dependent on us as citizens, wear our masks, keep the social distancing, and keep the numbers down. Under the mayor's request, the city council can attend in council concurrent. On September 16th, a letter was signed by the South Bay mayors, was sent to the governor, Newt, and shared with the LA County requesting consideration of the state of California to permit the cities of the South Bay region of LA to open businesses consistent with the red tier for COVID-19. The letter is included with this system as attachment fee. LA County Health has allowed aerospace shops to open 25% capacity. And staff continues to reach out to Torrance businesses and share the latest guidelines posted on the City Business Resources website at wwwcityoftorranceca.com/reopening. Currently, 103 businesses have been approved for outdoor operations. 14 businesses have secured financial assistance for outdoor setups. Seven business-related businesses have been permitted to operate in city parks, four at El Prado, one at Wilson, and two at Lago Seco. Expenditures for the assistance with outdoor setup is $52,509 with an overall total cost of $97,923 spent on business assistance to date from the council approved COVID-19 business assistance program. Additionally, there are seven business-related businesses that have been permitted to operate in city parks, four at El Prado, one at Wilson, and two at Lago Seco. As staff continues to evaluate the downtown outdoor dining pilot project, street closures are suspended due to permitted parklets in the streets being created for various restaurants. Staff are also looking into how the outdoor dining concept may be facilitated long-term while still allowing for adequate parking. Multiple departments are also reviewing the reconfiguration of the monthly antique street fair that has been impacted by the restaurants expanding out into the streets. Restaurants and other businesses interested in pursuing extended outdoor dining or business operations are encouraged to contact our Office of Economic Development. Permitting fees and some equipment costs can be covered. Staff continues to reach out to Torrance business and share the latest guidelines posted on the City Business Resources website, wwwcityoftorranceca.com/reopening. Questions can be directed to the Office of Economic Development either via email at economicdevelopment@torranceca.gov or via phone at 310-618-5807. City of Torrance continues to monitor all federal, state, and county guidelines and to share that information with the community. The public is reminded to wear face covering at all times when in public, follow social distancing protocols. Now, since this is my last 19 update, I wanted to again take this opportunity to thank our residents, businesses, and visitors for your cooperation with these safety initiatives. Your ability to adjust and comply with safe protocols is clearly evidenced by the number of cases in Torrance. Special thanks to our city staff for going above and beyond the call of services for providing essential services to our community under very difficult circumstances. In a time of challenges, and I know especially in stress, to our businesses, to you as the council, to comply with all the guidelines that are established by the county. Unfortunately, the county is the guiding light and the power and the authority that we have to constantly go back to and follow those guidelines. Doesn't mean that we can't address methodologies of still working towards reopening as effectively as we can, of reaching out to the county and influencing their decision-making to be more equitable and to more directly relate to what the real facts are within our community. We look forward to the opening up more businesses if we can continue the trends that we see at the present time. And again, those trends are dependent on us, the citizens, to keep our facial masks and social distancing. Our chief, our fire chief and the ELC director are available for any questions you might have. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. I'm sure when you hired on with the City of Torrance a few years ago, you never thought that you would be making updates on coronavirus every week to the community. Probably the furthest thing from your mind.
I agree.
And there was probably so many other things you were doing back then. Appreciate that. Any questions or comments from the council? I see none, so I'll take a motion to accept and file. Councilmember Chen.
Thank you, Mayor, I move to accept and file, item nine A.
Councilman McLeone.
Kalani, second.
Roll call vote, councilmember Ashcraft.
Yes.
Councilmember Chen.
Yeah.
Councilmember Goodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Griffiths.
Yes.
Councilmember Kalani.
Yes.
Councilmember Matucci.
Yes.
Mayor Fury.
Yes.
Your Honor, that motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. We move on to item nine, beers and blah blah, from Community Development to approve a three-year licensing and maintenance agreement for airport noise monitoring system, from staff.
Linda Sessna with Community Development. We continue to recommend that we approve the three-year licensing and maintenance agreement for 149,485 annually. We did speak with the folks from B&amp;K, and they have changed a clause in the contract that would allow us to terminate at the end of each year should we choose to do so. There is also a supplemental with some additional information, and we are available for questions.
Thank you, are there any other questions from the council? Councilmember Chen.
Mayor, I think councilmember Kalani was waving because I think she probably may be having trouble with the coffee.
Oh, okay, I, okay. She was waving in the office, I didn't see anything on the screen.
She was waving before you lost her picture.
Okay.
I think, Your Honor, this is Patrick Sullivan, the city attorney. She was trying to get your attention that she was gonna be accusing herself like she did last week to avoid it.
Oh, that's correct, that's.
So it's the same word that she used last week.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sullivan. That explains everything. Does, are there any questions from the council? Councilmember Matucci.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a question about the cost of doing this. I know last week we tabled this, talked about hopefully maybe either negotiating or looking into doing an RFP on this. I know on the month-to-month, I guess it was gonna go up by, I believe, 15%. Was there any talks about doing month-to-month without the surcharge?
We did discuss that with them, and at this time, if we were gonna do a month-to-month, they would be charging the additional 15%. They have withheld that charge for the last three months, but it does cause them some additional work, so it would, they would continue with the surcharge.
Okay, I'm, I support the effort of monitoring the noise. I just don't support the amount of money that we're having to spend for this service. And also, I don't like the fact that we, over the years, haven't gone out to bid on this. At least, that's my recollection on this, is that we just kinda renewed it just because they're already there. Is that correct?
We have renewed it for the most part because we have the proprietary equipment in place, and to have to replace all of the equipment would be a much greater expense than to just continue the service with the existing equipment. If we go out to RFP, then we will be looking at replacement of the equipment, which is a significant expense.
Okay, but I mean, if overall, let's say the equipment, figuratively speaking, is $200,000, and, but we save, whatever, $80,000 a year in fees, we wouldn't know that unless we went out to RFP. I'm not saying that we have to not do this, I just, I just think, considering that we're spending those enterprise funds, you know, at a pretty big rate. I mean, I don't know what it entails for monitoring. I would imagine the equipment is doing most of the job. The software is probably doing most of the job. But I just, I feel like if we truly shopped around, we can get this a lot cheaper overall on servicing. And as far as the equipment goes, we don't know truly how much it costs unless we actually put it out to bid. So, again, you know, I support the idea of monitoring noise and letting the public know, giving them access. But I'm not gonna be supporting spending this kind of money without going to RFP. That's all I got, thank you.
Councilman, this is Leroy Jackson. You could actually do both to a certain extent, renew the contract because it'll take a period of time to develop the RFP, to go out on the RFP, and to review the RFP. During that period of time, the current vendor would monitor and review the equipment. At the time you have the RFP come back to you, you can decide to go out and see what you have with the one-year capability of closing the contract at the end of the year. If the RFP were put out, you could see whether there was a real difference in pricing. With the understanding that the current vendor would have the advantage of not having to build equipment and would probably come in lower on actual cost, you'd have to evaluate the cost and the facility replacement as part of that packaging when it returned to you at a later date. That element might be something that you'd wanna send to the airport commission for its review and comment.
Okay, yeah, that's why you make the big bucks, Leroy. But, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Yeah, great suggestion, thank you.
Mr. Chen was first, and then councilmember Griffiths.
Thank you, Mayor. I think I saw something in the supplemental, and the last time we discussed this in council, that the number of flights in the airport has reduced from the get-go when this noise ordinance was developed. And I was thinking philosophically along similar lines, and I think the vendor said this system's coming to its end of life anyway. I think I read that supplemental. I'm wondering if the airport, we send this back to airport commission with something, maybe it's a variation of what Mr. Jackson just suggested. I know this may be a little wild, just maybe we just suspend the operation of this system and then take it back to airport commission to even determine, do we even need to have an outside noise monitoring system? Is there a way, something we could do, you know, with our existing staff that we don't have to pay an additional unique licensing fee? But I'm suggesting that we don't renew the contract, we just let it go since it has ended life anyway. What process will we do to, you don't consider that?
As staff, we would recommend if you want to do something like that, that again, we should probably maintain the contract for at least a year and go out to the airport commission and talk to the public. To cease a program that's been in existence for as long as this has without any public input, I think, would be an unusual step for the city to take.
Right, that's what I was wondering, do we send it back? That's because based on data, when this thing first started, it sounds like the number of, you know, takeoffs and landing were much higher than now, and then now it's kind of just and the helicopters are flying now are probably different than back then. So, it's something I'm suggesting we entertain. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, councilmember Chen. Councilmember Griffiths is next, followed by Goodrich.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, Ms. Sessna and I had some pretty serious discussions on this issue, as you could see by my supplemental questions that I posed. And that is, is that I'm really opposed to the amount of money for three years that this will cost using some older equipment. And I'll be honest with you, I just don't know what the real need is for the system at all. I just, the number of complaints is relatively low. And I just am concerned with the amount of money that we're spending on this and the few amount of complaints that we have. Is this the best thing for us to do? And so, kinda going along with what Mr. Jackson said, I don't know how we're gonna live without you, Mr. Jackson, when you make great suggestions like you did, that we consider taking this out to the commission and let them evaluate the need for a noise monitoring system in today's world, to put out an RFP for a new system that uses modern technology so that we know what maybe our lower costs could be if the technology has reduced the cost of these things for new products from other manufacturers. So I think a two-pronged approach is to keep the system in place for a maximum of one year. And I was almost leaning towards stopping it today and leaving the components in place should we wanna turn it back on. But I'd be willing to go for one more year with the current product and have the commission evaluate the, do a public outreach in regards to noise issues with the current airport traffic, and then also go out to develop an RFP and put that out to see what kind of products come back and what kind of pricing that we have, and see if we can potentially save some money and still implement a noise system. And based on what the findings of the commission would be from the public to see maybe we just don't even need to implement this for the small number of clear violations that we've been having. So, that would be my direction. I am really concerned with the cost of this, based on the small number of actual violations.
Councilmember Goodrich.
I'd like to make that a motion.
Councilmember Goodrich wants to hear it.
I also have some serious concerns about the cost on this. At a time when we just cut $20 million from our budget for this, half a million dollars over three years is a good chunk of change right there. There's not a whole lot of other programs in the city where you're gonna find that kind of money. I see the value, but it's just getting very expensive. And what I'd like to do is, there was a Torrance resident, a young gentleman that has some aerospace professional experience and is interested in getting involved in this. I'd like to have staff have a conversation with him and explore over the next couple of years what he might be able to do because I think technology has evolved to the point where it might be feasible for somebody with some programming experience and some electronics experience like this to actually develop a system like this without as much trouble as what might have been 10 years ago. It's pretty amazing, I know a number of startup business owners that have to hire employees to do coding and stuff, and what they can do, the capabilities that they have these days is pretty amazing. So I think it's possible to be able to do something on that and with considerable cost savings if we were to go down that route. So, definitely in favor of some cost savings on this program. Looking at it, it's the large, really, the airports that have this are really the really large airports, LAX and so on across the country, and also the cities with money to burn and wanting to close down an airport, also known as Santa Monica. So, anything that we can do to find an alternative at a less expensive cost would be good. In regards to public comment, I understand about going to the airport commission. On the other hand, this is the third time we've talked about this in two months, so I'm not sure that it's fair to say that we haven't done, haven't accepted public comment.
Thank you, anybody else? In history, sometimes you, councilwoman Ashcraft, you wanna, you remember some of the history on this?
Yeah, I have a question for Ms. Sessna. How many employees does it take to run this program?
Currently, we have about half a person working at the airport, and then we have a senior and myself that also get involved. Clearly, this kind of information has been provided, I've taken care of that. We do our hearing boards, and our senior usually does those. So, there's usually less than one full person that is working the system at any time.
Okay, and, yes, do those people, other than you, have other job responsibilities at the airport?
No, no, they are code enforcement folks, so they have lots of other job responsibilities, but not at the airport.
Okay, so you're talking code enforcement. What about running this program? Who's over there running this program?
Our code enforcement staff.
Oh, okay, so they're handling the software?
Well, actually, they use the software. That software is handled by the company that provides it to us.
Okay, that answers my question. So the company is providing employees to do this. We don't do anything with it, all we do is do the code enforcement.
Well, we use the data that they give us, that the system generates. We use a lot of the things that the system can tell us, but we don't actually run the system per se.
Okay, that was my main question. Okay, yeah, 'cause I too am in the field of thinking it's too much money right now, and I would be for the commission to give the residents the opportunity to speak, for the commission to take it back again and listen to what the community has to say and see if we do really need this, because times have changed and obviously, software and these programs have changed. So I think it's time to look into that part of it. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Councilmember Matucci.
If we're ready, I'd like to offer a motion.
Please.
Okay, I, well, I move that we don't fund this and take it to the airport commission for review and possible RFP if they so decide to go down that route. I just don't think that we should be spending this kind of money right now.
Do we have a second? Councilmember Chen.
I will second that, but I'd like to make a modified motion, well, before I complete the second. Hopefully, I get this right process. My modified motion would be if the staff could go, since it's ending this contract September 30, while we're doing this, the staff go back to the company and see we'll get a two-month extension at a rate, just two months, and then have the airport commission come back and we can make a decision after that. Is that a?
Well, the only problem with that is we do not have a meeting. We do not have a meeting after today before this contract expires.
Well, I would just, then I would just second the motion as supposed.
Okay.
Well, before we, I have a question then. So, that motion means.
Question the motion, go ahead.
Yeah, questioning the motion. That means we're gonna go forward without any fracking system. Is that the desire of the motion maker?
That was my understanding.
Yeah, we let the contract expire on September 30th, and we take it back to the airport commission to investigate and possibly, you know, give us direction on a RFP, if that's the direction I take. So, at that time, and I think Goodrich brought up a good point, and this is the third time we talk about it. I think the public has plenty of time and occasions to give us their input on this subject. So, but they'll have plenty of more time to have input during the airport commission discussion. That was my motion.
Okay, so with your motion, Mr. Matucci, my question to Ms. Sessna is, would we be able to pick this up again if we needed to? Would the company honor us taking this back after the commission looks at it and we think, oh, we need this for another six months to a year? If we let it go now? Yeah.
If we let it go now, as we, the company addressed this in the supplemental, because we are working on.
I didn't see it.
Okay, it's older equipment, they may or may not be able to jump the system back into action. Some of the equipment may need to be recalibrated, there may be some technical issues with that, and we would not have the same pricing. We also would not have, as long as we're under the same contract, they are responsible for the maintenance of the equipment itself, so if there are issues, they take care of it. Once we stop that contract, if we wanna jump back into it. Once we stop that contract, if we want to jump back into it, they would no longer have any obligation to take care of the equipment if there were issues, so that would be on us.
So we're gambling that on the good side, we might save a lot of money by having a new contract somewhere else with new technology. Okay, I get it.
Another motion? And there is a second? Are there any other questions on the motion? If not, we'll take a roll call.
Yes, Your Honor. Councilmember Ashcraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Chen?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodrich?
Aye.
Councilmember Griffiths?
No.
Councilmember Matucci?
Yes.
Mayor Fury?
No.
Your Honor, that motion carried with Councilmember?
Councilmember Goodrich, and Councilmember Griffiths, put his hand up.
Yeah, we still look alike. I just wanted to explain my vote as a no on this is that my preference would be is to not gamble and to leave the system in place for one year while we do the research on an RFP and public outreach. I think that would be the more prudent way to handle it, but I just wanted to let the public know why I voted no. Thank you.
Thank you. And while you're saying, why you voted no, I voted no also because I know what we went through before on this and there will be public hearings and the people will come out and they will be upset that there is no monitoring system, there is no data tracking that they can do. And we'll be looking at, as Councilman Ashcraft, you're actually, I guess we're playing dice. Will there be something cheaper? Maybe, but maybe not. So we move on. The next item on the agenda is item nine, Diaz and Charlie.
Mayor, this is Patrick Sullivan. I don't think the clerk actually finished announcing the vote of that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you announce the vote?
Yes, Your Honor. That motion carried with Councilmember Griffiths and Mayor Fury voting no and Councilmember Kalani recusing herself.
Okay. And I think before we move on, we should let Councilmember Kalani know that we're going forward. She can come out of her cloister. Councilman Kalani has rejoined us. We're now moving on to item nine, Diaz and Charlie. This is from Community Development to introduce an ordinance granting California Water Service Company, a California corporation, a pipeline franchise for the right to transport water along the public right of way in the city of Torrance from staff.
Good evening. I'm Greg Lowden with the Community Development Department. The item before council tonight is the adoption of an ordinance to renew a franchise agreement with California Water Corporation. In April 2005, the city council adopted an ordinance granting California Water Service Company, or CalWater, a franchise with an 11-year term. This franchise expired in May 2016. The agreement has been operated on holdover since that time as CalWater continues to make payments to the city. This ordinance will continue to grant CalWater a pipeline franchise for the transportation of water within the city of Torrance, beginning at the intersection of Sepulveda Boulevard with the westerly boundary of the city, extending easterly direction along Sepulveda Boulevard to Walnut Street, then running south along Walnut Street to the southern border of the city. Although the pipeline is not PUC regulated, the city has traditionally used the PUC rate structure for this pipeline. If adopted, the franchise would continue to generate an annual payment to the city based on 2% of CalWater's gross annual receipts. This franchise will also generate an initial fee of $7,500. In 2019, this franchise ordinance brought in revenue of $11,644. The proposed franchise is exempt from CEQA per section 15301, which applies to projects involving existing facilities. Staff recommends adoption of this ordinance, approving an extension to franchise ordinance number 3664, with a 25-year term and adoption of a categorical exemption from CEQA, as well as approving an ordinance summary for publication. This concludes staff's presentation and we are available for questions. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lowden. Are there any questions from the council? I see none. I'll take a, I'll go to do a motion and I guess we need a number and title, please.
Yes, Your Honor. This is ordinance number 3884. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Torrance, California, granting to California Water Service Company, a California corporation, a franchise to construct, lay, operate, test, maintain, use, renew, repair, replace, move, change the size and number of, and remove or abandon and place a system of pipelines, and are burdenships, I don't know how to say that, I'm so sorry, for the purposes of conducting, transporting, conveying, and carrying water on, along, in, under, and across public streets, ways, alleys, and places within the city of Torrance.
I'll take a motion to adopt the categorical exemption, adopt the ordinance number 3884 and approve ordinance summary for publication. Councilmember Goodrich.
So moved.
Councilwoman Kalani.
Second, thank you.
Roll call vote, Councilmember Ashcraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Chen?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodrich?
Aye.
Councilmember Griffiths?
Yes.
Councilmember Kalani?
Yes.
Councilmember Matucci?
Yes.
Mayor Fury?
Yes.
Your Honor, that motion carried unanimously.
All right, now we move on to item nine, Diaz and David. Also, this is from the city manager and the city attorney, ratification and extension of administrative orders. Is this our city attorney?
Yes, Your Honor. Patrick Sullivan, City Attorney. This is another one of our items that we've been bringing forward to the city council as a result of the orders that have been issued by city manager Jackson. This is the one that is bringing us up to date through the end of September. These are the administrative orders. These are the smaller orders that he has issued that usually relate to buildings and city services. So this takes us from July 17, 2020 to September 17, 2020, for his administrative orders relating to COVID and available for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions from our learned council? See none. I'll take a motion to, okay, I guess I need a number and title.
Yes, Your Honor. This is resolution number 2020-103. A resolution of the city council of the city of Torrance, California, ratifying administrative order issued by the city manager acting as the director of emergency services between July 17, 2020 and September 17, 2020.
Take a motion and to adopt a resolution. Councilwoman Kalani?
Motion to adopt resolution number 2020-103.
Councilmember Griffiths?
Yeah, Councilman Griffiths, second.
Roll call vote, Councilmember Ashcraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Chen?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodrich?
Aye.
Councilmember Griffiths?
Yes.
Councilmember Kalani?
Yes.
Councilmember Matucci?
Yes.
Mayor Fury?
Yes.
Your Honor, that motion carried unanimously.
Okay, now we're moving on to item nine, E as in Edward. From the city manager, to consider options to receive public comment during city council meetings from staff.
Out of all mayor and members of the city council, Michael Smith from the city manager's office. Before you tonight, as a recommendation of the city manager, that the city council consider options to receive telephonic public comments during virtual city council meetings. Option one is to continue to receive public comments at the beginning of the meeting for 60 minutes and comment separately during public hearings as we've done tonight. That would be no change. Or two, receive public comments limited to oral communications at the beginning of the meeting for a certain duration, receive public comments for routine items collectively for a certain duration, and continue to receive public hearing comments separately. Or number three, receive public comments limited to oral communications at the beginning and/or end of the meeting for a certain duration, receive public comments for routine items and public hearings as they appear individually throughout the meeting for a certain duration. And number four, continue with in-house call center or consider outsourcing that service. This item is a result of an oral communications by Councilman Matucci with the concurrence of the city council for staff to return with an item to allow the council to discuss and consider options to receive public comments during virtual meetings. The current format was instituted with the desire to allow a convenient time for the public to participate at the beginning of the meeting. The 60-minute period allows for the public up to three minutes to comment on any item or not on the agenda, and/or not on the agenda, with the exception of public hearings. To facilitate public comments, a call center was created to maximize the number of telephone calls that could be received. A five-member team receives the telephone calls, instructions are provided, and the caller is placed into a reservation list platform or waiting room. When calling the hotline, if they experience a busy signal, it may be due to peak calling at the very beginning of the 60-minute period. The mayor has encouraged the public to call back, as he did today, and you may recall over the last few meetings, the entire 60-minute period was not used. To manage cost effectively, the center has four salaried and two hourly employees. The hourly employees work an adjusted shift for cost containment. The existing reservation list platform costs about $900 per meeting. Options available include in the item may increase the cost. If the council desires to modify the current format with outsourcing, staff will obtain three competitive quotes before moving forward. I along with communications manager Ernest Gallo are available for questions if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schneff. Appreciate the background on this. Are there any questions from the council? Councilmember Matucci.
Thank you, Mayor, and also thank you, council, for the concurrence to bring this back. I just want to, one of the main reasons I wanted to bring this back is a lot of the criticisms that I've been personally receiving from the public about this system that we have in place, that we crunched everything down to one hour and one minute. I just want to make it clear that the council did not make that decision to eliminate the two orals and the per-item call-in ability. Of course, we are under different circumstances, to say the least, so we've had to adapt. I think, I appreciate the mayor and the city managers' I guess, desire to simplify it, but unfortunately, the 60 minutes at the beginning have really become a Black Lives Matter hour and I just, I really do feel that a lot of our residents just really just stopped calling in. They got, you know, busy signal at the beginning. Some people have semi screenshots or they've called over 70 times to no avail. So, you know, I wanted to bring this back so that we can discuss options that, you know, A, are going to make it easier for the public to call in, especially during the items for discussion. I think a lot of questions pop up in people's minds after the staff's presentation and I think, I think it's really our obligation to the public to give every caller the ability to call in on those items separately than the oral communication. So again, I do appreciate the mayor's effort to try to streamline this and also the staff. I really do hope tonight we can talk about a solution. And again, I know that this is not going to be a permanent thing. This may be only for the next three, four, maybe five months, who knows? But for, during this time, I'd hope that we can figure out how staff can maybe increase the call volume capability so that we can put people in queue. I believe that we only have five lines and it's obviously not enough, especially at the beginning of that oral communication. Now, if we were to separate the oral communication to, let's say, 30 minutes, one minute each at the beginning of the meeting, then each item allow whatever amount of calls to come in, even if we do still keep it at one minute per call. So I, you know, I would really suggest that we go with three tonight with staff's guidance as to how we can expand that system and keep it in-house. I think the staff has been doing a fabulous job. I definitely want to keep it in-house and not go through such a big expense with further equipment or outsourcing. That's all I have to say, Mayor.
Councilmember Goodrich had his hand up and then followed by Councilmember Chen, or yeah, I think I'm going diagonal on mine, Chen and then Griffiths.
Thank you, Mayor. I've given this a lot of thought, always in favor of more transparency and the ability of our residents to communicate with us. Unfortunately, we're hampered in a couple of aspects because of the virus and the format in which we're conducting these meetings. And I really think that what we have now is probably about the best we're going to get. And the reason I say that is for a different reason than you might imagine, but the, I've gotten more complaints about the vulgarity, far more complaints about the vulgarity in these meetings and the public comment times, whether it be the way we have it now where it's all stacked up at the beginning or if it was interspersed and people were stretching it to try to be able to comment on stuff that's really not germane and then you get a bunch of vulgarity there too in the middle of the meeting. So I've gotten far, far more comments about the bad language being used in our meetings than I have about the inability to provide public comment. And I guess if you look at it, it makes sense because the people that are giving me those comments about the vulgarity know that there's alternative ways to get ahold of us. So they're, I mean, they're emailing me to tell me that. So they don't have to call in to provide that comment and they know there's other ways to get ahold of us. And unfortunately, I really wish we could go back to accepting comment, but I'm just thinking about, there's a lot of people in our city that watch the replays of the meetings when they come on city cable. And I should also state for people watching this and watching the replay, that there's nothing we can do about censoring the bad language. That's already been visited. It's been determined that it's free speech, so no matter what the language is on there, how bad it is, we are not by law allowed to censor it. So that's not an option. But for the people that watch these replays during the week, if, you know, normally you think you could throw on a city council meeting and let your kids run around and you're watching, you're watching the city council replay, well, that's not the case, but at least the way it is now, you can get past the bad part and then watch the meat of the actual substance of the city council meeting without fear of the kids having to hear something bad during the middle of the meeting. It's kind of a choice of that or not watching it at all for fear of somebody hearing this vile language that's not supposed to hear it. So it's really a balancing act and I think for the time being, at least for the next couple of months until maybe things change in our format a little bit, this is probably about, the way we're doing it now is probably about the best we're going to get. That's all I have to say about that. That's that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Chen.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually just just gonna try to see if I could propose an option five, uh, which is not here. Uh, thank you, staff, for providing all the information, and actually, it's on staff pages two and three that gave me, uh, an idea that, like, maybe the staff needs to come back the next time we get together to see if this is even possible. The first thing is, I looked at page two and three and looked at the the number of cities that the staff compare, and what was actually surprising to me at the column that says meetings per month, uh, only the county of LA and county of Santa Barbara still meets four times per month, and the city of Torrance, Santa Monica, uh, two, maybe up to four. Um, so, one thing I'd like to do, Mayor, uh, I checked with the with the attorney, if I could do as related as with the concurrence of the council, is, uh, staff come back to see during this pandemic period, um, we consider is it feasible to go to two council meetings per month? But that's one thing. Uh, I don't know if I need to get it up and down, but I have more things to do in line with this. Should I keep going there?
Sure.
Okay, so that was one thing. I think I need to get concurrence for that, but what I was getting at is, if we went down that road, my suggestion would be is during the section seven, when we have orals, we bring that down to thirty minutes, and, you know, we could choose something like, you know, one minute per, uh, that's not on the agenda, and then we allow the public to comment per administrative item, because sometimes I understand, some, they they don't get the, uh, the staff reports or the presentations, so sometimes hard to have your comment early when you may have a revelation when the staff actually provides those PowerPoint explanations, which stirs up questions and thoughts. So we bring that back to, and then the staff, you know, between the staff and us, suggests how many minutes for that. And then with respect to the call system, you know, four salaried people and two hourly, I know that we use, um, you know, our system, it's not, uh, uh, a secret that we use Zoom, and the Zoom could take a caller in the waiting room, and the staff could let the waiting room person in or out, and we could consider experimenting using the Zoom system. I know it has risks. We probably go back to this, uh, um, you know, the the system, the phone system we're using now, at least, we we could at least try, like, one or two council meetings using the Zoom, uh, waiting room, and the staff could click in and click out with a timer. And that, to me, is already paid for, I believe, when the staff will have to come back with that. So that's really what it is. So let me summarize. One was I was gonna ask concurrence for the council, consider staff come back with, during pandemic period, we go to two times per month, thirty minutes of orals in, uh, not on the agenda, allow the public to make comments during the admin sections, and we, uh, we consider the the Zoom waiting room in and out call. That's, that was it, uh. I don't know if that's clear.
I think I heard what you said. I I I certainly don't agree with any of it. I I I think, uh, you know, we've come to this position, uh, it wasn't easy getting to where we are, it's starting to run smoothly, it's not broke, uh, you don't have to fix it, it's the old adage. Uh, having less meetings only means longer meetings, uh, means people would have to stay up later to wait for item, uh, ten A and ten B and ten C, um, who they'd be willing to call in. You know, we have a very sophisticated and educated, uh, constituency. Uh, as Councilmember Goodrich said, I I receive emails ahead of time, uh, and and we receive them as public comment, uh, they're distributed to us now according to the item. Um, you know, it's, we're not gonna be doing this forever, uh, you know, I, Councilmember Matucci said three or four months, but I I'm thinking we may be maybe a month away from going back to the chambers, and then we'll be looking for another methodology to do it, and, you know, frankly, there's, you know, we might not be in the same room as somebody, or they may have to line up outside and come in, uh, you know, these are things that we'll have to, uh, do, but, you know, why spend time on this? This works, it's within, uh, the governor's orders, it's, uh, compliant with the Brown Act, um, it was modeled off of, uh, the county of Los Angeles, uh, they do, they do it, and they have a team of lawyers that looked at it and perfected it, we didn't just go without a hat. Uh, and, uh, you know, I, the reason we put the hearing in the front was because we have staff to consider. We have staff sitting in a call center waiting to take phone calls, so we finish one thing, they go on to the next thing, and then when they're completed, they can, uh, leave for the day, the hourly employees can go as well. Um, it's, it's, you know, this did not just happen, and there was a lot of thought that went into this. If you recall back how we were doing it, uh, and perhaps we should all look back at some of those dates, how bad it was, so, you know, try Zoom, uh, you know, I I've done number Zooms, uh, countless Zooms, and, uh, it's not perfect at all. I think our call center's doing a real good job. I think, uh, Katie is the voice of the, the, uh, the call center. Uh, Councilmember Griffith, I'm sorry, you you were waiting.
Yes, I was. Thank you very much. Um, yeah, I certainly miss, uh, our pre-COVID days where people were able to speak on different items. Uh, I think that that's important for our public to be able to have the opportunity to have more of a dialogue as the item is being discussed. Uh, a lot of times, information will come out on an item that isn't in the staff report, and the public may want to comment on that, and under the current configuration, they don't have that opportunity. Um, but I also understand that because of the way we're doing our meeting formats now, uh, it's much more complicated to have staff manage the call, the call center, uh, have people calling in and and trying to categorize the callers as to which item they're for, and it's a lot of work, a lot of time, and then it's extra money for the city, so, I I'm also understanding that the need to balance that effort and try to keep things easy. So it's a, it's a real big dilemma for me, and and I think, I guess, the saving grace for me is to to certainly hope that we're not in this situation from having video conference meetings and and telephone conference, uh, uh, public comment, uh, in this format for for a whole lot of months more. And, um, I I don't see any of the formats that are being proposed as as being better or not worse than the others, uh, except for the fact that I I do agree to some extent that the public is is being shut out of the conversation on some of this because they're not able to speak on the items, uh, when the items come up and are being discussed, and and I I think that's the piece that I'm, uh, feeling the worst about, that we've, uh, taken that away from the public. But they do have the right to to call in ahead of time or to, uh, email, but again, sometimes they're gonna miss out on things that are discussed by staff that aren't in the reports or that are brought up by council that, uh, um, they should have the opportunity to to be able to talk about, but, uh, if it's just a matter of a couple of months, I can wait until we get back to the format we were in before, and I would like to see us move back towards the original council chambers format. Uh, but under this certain circumstances and the complexities of a call center and staffing, uh, I can, I can see the benefit of continuing it the way we are for just a couple of more months, and that's assuming it's just gonna be a couple more months, but, uh, if there was a way we could incorporate comment on the items, uh, without making it a monstrous task for the the call center, I I would love to see that. Those are my comments.
Councilman Ashcraft, followed by Councilman McCollum.
Thank you. I agree with Councilman Griffith totally. Uh, my only change would be to add the time during the agenda items to let people call, but then I also realize our call center, because I don't wanna go to an outside source, our call center is doing a very good job, and, um, the ability for them to stay on and on doesn't seem like a viable, um, answer for me right now. But if we're gonna go beyond two months, I wanna bring this back again and revisit it to maybe go to that, uh, where people have the option to call in on agenda items. Um, I don't think two council meetings a month would be a good idea. I know that there are times we get council meetings canceled because we don't have enough business to do, that that does happen. Um, if we went to two meetings a month, we'd be here really late and long, um, and I don't think anything gets done efficiently if if you're prolonging things like that. So, um, I know city manager and staff have been very good about canceling meetings if there's not enough business to do. So, the only thing I would change, um, would be individual comments on agenda items, but I understand call center, and so I will, if we just go for two more months, I'm fine with that. Thank you.
Councilman McCollum.
Thank you. Is it, is it possible, um, and forgive me if I if I misunderstand, is it possible to do the first forty minutes of the sixty minutes general comments and the last twenty reserved for comments only on, uh, agenda items?
Um, yeah, of course, it's, uh, you know, it's something you can do, but, um, you're gonna get to multiple callers again, people who are gonna call in and and just just for the, just for the sake of calling in, uh, and and that's the problem that you get on it. If you put them all in together, uh, and that's why the county does it that way, and I'm not even sure if it goes through muster that way. You know, if you pick and choose which ones you're gonna take telephone calls on, um, I don't know if that, uh, would pay, uh, Brown Act muster. Uh, I I'm, I'm pretty confident that this is not gonna be more than our taxes. I I don't think two months, I think way too mu, two months is way too long. Uh, I'm, maybe I'm being optimistic or way, way too optimistic, um, but I I I think we could look at this and come back and and look at it, you know, and the old adage is, it's don't, it's not broke, what are we trying to fix? Uh, you know, George, you know, we've talked many times about, uh, having less council meetings, and, you know, sometimes it looks like a good idea, but we are not Santa Monica, and we're not Hawthorne, and we're not Redondo Beach, so we have a pretty darn big city, a full-service city, have lots of things, obviously, our, here it is eleven o'clock at night, and we're still talking about this council meeting. So, uh, you know, going to two, two meetings a month, uh, doesn't make sense for a city our size. Uh, and, uh, you know, I recognize I I'd like to have, uh, the public input too, but, uh, you know, what is public input? Um, intelligent discussion? Yeah. Uh, do we get intelligent discussion? Um, you know, there's some phone calls that are very, very good, um, but, uh, I think somebody hit, uh, the Guinness Book of Records, uh, tonight, uh, under sixty minutes, he said he dropped an F-bomb twenty times. I I think that must be a Guinness Book of Records, because I write down every one of these, and 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 as was pointed at the outset, we've not used up to sixty minutes in a long time. Uh, and I think only one time have we come to the end of six, at sixty minutes, and there was somebody left on the phone, so everybody gets an opportunity to speak to us, and 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 we receive lots of emails about the agenda items, uh, sometimes they ask questions of us, and we pass them on the staff. I think we're doing okay, I think we're, you know, going down a real dark road trying to, uh, you know, make three or four or five, six, eight people happy. Councilmember Matucci.
I'm, thank you, Mayor. I really do think that it's really our duty to allow everyone to speak during those, uh, items, during the administrative, uh, uh, items. I think, in a way, we're, we're, we're telling our residents that, uh, Black Lives Matter is more important because we're allowing them to pretty much take up the whole hour, and, you know, when it, when it comes time to, uh, you keep on calling, it's busy, it's busy, it's busy, so, you know, I would have to, you know, I'd beg to disagree on this one, because the system is broken that we have. I know this is kinda like it was pieced together fair of the moment, I think they're doing a great job, don't get me wrong, but the system is broken, because when a resident picks up the phone and calls because they wanna comment on a, uh, on an item, let's say nine C, or even nine E, uh, they should be able to get through, and they should be able to put, they'd be put in queue, uh, and, when I say, I also think that administrative matters should not have limits as to how many people are in call. If there's fifty people that wanna call in on an item, we need to give the public that that option, and if it's true, man, that it may be less than two months, that's even better. That means we don't have to worry about the added overtime cost for much longer, but I think in the overall, I guess, spectrum of things, you know, paying an extra, I don't know, maybe staff can answer this question, you know, how much more overtime based on the meetings, the way they go now, and how many, the average of items that we have in administrative matters, uh, what are we talking about? Uh, a thousand dollars per meeting in overtime, two thousand dollars per meeting in overtime, uh, times four meetings a month, times two months, that's eight meetings, that's anywhere from eight thousand to sixteen thousand dollars. Uh, and on a budget, you know, on a budget over two hundred million dollars a year for a general, uh, budget, I think, uh, you know, that's the least we can do for the public, is allow them to to call and and speak. If there might be a hot topic item that fifty people might wanna call in, then there might be items that nobody calls in, but we have to allow every, every person that picks up the phone should be able to get through, and yes, they can write an email, but the truth of the matter is, uh, it go, it, to me, it's a lot more effective, uh, if a person, uh, if a person is on the phone talking to us, uh, we're listening, and the public is listening as well. Uh, so, I really do hope that tonight we take the action of, at least, at the very least, without expanding the amount of, uh, phone lines, at the very least, take the phone calls separately for the items, let's not put limitations as to how many people can call, let's save the overtime that's needed. I'm sure out of the, you know, over, what is it, fourteen hundred employees we have here, I'm sure we can find, uh, people willing to look some overtime, uh, to take care of the call center. Um, we have a lot of great talent, we have, I think, a system that works, and I think if we separate the calls between the thirty minutes at the beginning, one minute each, and every item, uh, we'll see that their workload is not gonna be so, uh, so bad. Uh, so, I mean, that's, that's where I'm at. I I really do hope that we go in that direction tonight. I think somebody else wanted to talk about that.
Councilmember Edrich.
Yes, I just, uh, wanted to chime in regarding the frequency of meetings and the support Councilman Chen in that, uh, I've been saying this for six years, that I think we meet more frequently if what's needed, and when I saw Las Vegas can meet two times a month, uh, I'm thinking that Torrance certainly can, uh, if not two, at least three, so I just wanted to reiterate my support for that. Um, Councilmember Matucci, hear what you're saying, applaud your your efforts and what you wanna do, I'm right there with you, I just, I'm gonna differ, uh, you know, and we're we're dealing with unprecedented times, and think that what we have now is the best we're gonna get, and and really, I I think there's more people that would like to be able to watch what's going on without having to turn it off or be interrupted and listen to all the the vulgarity. I think there's more people that wanna be able to watch and 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 hear what's going on without those interruptions than there are people that want to comment just at a specific time. So that's, that's what I'm weighing, so, again, I'll just, I'd say leave it where it is, at least for a few months, and, uh, I I think, uh, the mayor's right, that something will probably change before long here.
Certainly hope so. Does somebody wanna make a motion? Councilman Matucci.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I move that we, uh, take the administrative matters separately, the phone calls, uh, the thirty-minute initial oral comments, they can also be limited to one minute each, that's fine. initial oral comments, they can also be limited to one minute each, that's fine. The staff overtime, I'm sure we can cover with the budget. I'm sure we can find individuals willing to work it unless staff tells me differently. And just continue like that until we can go back to a normal schedule.
Is there a second? Councilmember Chen.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make sure I correctly understand the motion for the second. The motion is the current sixty-minute everything becomes thirty-minute of the orals, non agenda items, and then have the public address items either in the consent and the admin. Is it, do we split that? That's what I'm trying to understand.
I believe he said that. The minute credit, I don't give a word.
Okay, just the admin section. I will second that.
Roll call vote, Councilmember Ashcraft.
No.
Councilmember Chen.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodrich.
No.
Councilmember Griffiths.
Reluctantly, no.
Councilmember Kalani.
Reluctantly, thank you for the wording, Councilman Griffiths, no.
Councilmember Mutucci.
Yes.
Mayor Fury.
No.
Do you want to add that motion failed with Councilmember Chen and Councilmember Mutucci voting yes?
You have another motion?
Move to accept and file.
I don't know if we're going to accept the file. Is that what we're doing? I take a look over a motion for option one, two, three, or four. One is leave it like it is. Two is...
I think accept and file would be the same as one.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'd like to modify that.
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to request that we bring this back for discussion when we move back to council chamber.
That's a good modification.
Thank you.
So we say it's option one and come, why don't we, why don't we put a time on it rather than saying when we come back, you know? I'm hopeful that we will, but there's no guarantee. Why don't we say in six weeks? Because that would give us, that would be the two month December. So it would be sometime mid-November. Does that work?
Yeah.
How's that for your motion, sir?
That works.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second by Councilmember.
Roll call vote, Councilmember Ashcraft.
Yes.
Councilmember Chen.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Griffiths.
Yes.
Councilmember Kalani.
Yes.
Councilmember Mutucci.
No.
Mayor Fury.
Yes.
Do you want to add that motion carried with Councilmember Mutucci voting no?
Okay, now we, now moving on to item nine F. On September fourteenth, City Council State Legislative Advocacy Committee, which includes Councilmember Chen, Councilmember Goodrich, and myself as the chair of the committee, met to consider positions on the resolution of the League of California Cities and positions on the ballot measures of the California General Elections to be held on November thirty, two thousand and twenty. The process used to review the League's resolution and ballot measures included overview of resolution and ballot measures that met the city's established criteria, impact to local control, financial impact, and impact to public safety. Analysis from the city departments and other organizations, discussion, recommended positions by the committee. Council item nine F provides you with more detailed information on the League's resolution and six ballot measures. I'll give you the abbreviated version. This is the Reader's Digest version. First, we'll refer to the League's resolution, which is the slide up there. First, the committee addressed the League's resolution that is calling for an amendment of section two thirty of the Communications Decency Act of nineteen ninety-six. That requires social media companies to remove materials which promote criminal activities. The analysis from the police department was to support because this resolution addresses the use of social media platforms for posting information that leads followers to meet and commit crimes. The committee voted to support this resolution. Does council concur with the committee to support the League's resolution? I see a lot of yeses. If yes, then this resolution will be voted on at the League of California Cities Annual Conference scheduled for October seventh. There are twelve ballot measures on the November third ballot, of which six of the ballot measures meet the city's established criteria. The committee, and there's a little note in here from LA for me to refer to the ballot measure slide that indicates positions of various organizations, staffs, and committees. You can see which ones were supported, which one took no position, which one opposed, and what our city departments positions were on that. And let me go right down them here. The committee reviewed and recommended positions on the following ballot measures, Prop fifteen, increases funding source for public schools, community colleges, and local government services, finance, and Torrance Area Chamber of Commerce. Earlier in the evening, Donna Duperron, President and CEO of the Torrance Area Chamber, expressed an opposition position on this bill. On the other hand, the Finance Department indicated support for this proposition. The committee recommended an opposed position on Prop fifteen. Does the council concur with the committee's position on that? And can I give thumbs up so we got some kind of recordation of it? Okay. That gets me going to the next one. She gave me a whole roadmap of how to get down here. I'm learning how to be a staff member. Prop sixteen allows diversity as a factor in public employment, education, and contracting decisions. The analysis from Human Resources Civil Service was to recommend a neutral position on this bill since the city of Torrance hiring is based on civil service system. Originally, Councilmember Chen voted no, but decided to concur with staff recommendation of a neutral. The committee recommended a neutral position on Prop sixteen. Does council concur with the committee's position of neutral on this proposition? Okay, we have concurrence on that. Proposition nineteen, changes certain property tax rules. Analysis from fire and finance was provided to the committee, with the fire department in support and finance had no position. Due to the additional burden on the community with COVID- nineteen and financial uncertainty, myself and Councilmember Chen opposed Prop nineteen, and Councilmember Goodrich concurs with the fire department into the support position on Prop nineteen. The committee vote on Prop nineteen was two to one. Council will need to discuss and determine a position on that. So Prop nineteen is up on the board. Again, where is Prop nineteen? Oh, it's in our staff paper. Does anyone wish to discuss potential either supporting or not supporting nineteen? I can give you a quick summary as you're going through, just to refresh our recollection. Under Prop thirteen, presently, a person over the age of fifty-five has the ability to sell their home and buy a home of a lesser value and maintain their property tax at the original house, take that with them. It actually, the court decision or maybe legislature opened up that you could go to other counties as well. I think Orange County, maybe Riverside County and San Bernardino allow the same thing, that you could take your tax bill that you have for your present house, buy a house that costs less, but because of the measures of Prop thirteen, it kind of protects your property taxes, so you'll have a lower than the market rate property tax. What this says is that you could actually buy a house with a higher cost and you can still take your property tax with you, but then you have to pay a higher property tax on the value over. So if you buy a house, you sell your house for eight hundred thousand, you buy a house for a million, you take your Prop thirteen lower taxes with you, and then you have to pay the market rate taxes on the extra two hundred thousand dollars. So that's the trade-off they give. The other thing that it does impact is that's just your residential home. If you have income properties and it was part of your estate plan to give the income property to your children, that's no longer viable if Prop thirteen passes. It would be subject to Prop nineteen. It would then be subject to a new assessment at the market rate if it's passed on in the state. I think I nailed it to the best of my ability on that. And as I said, Councilmember Chen and I oppose Prop nineteen. Councilmember Goodrich concur with the fire department's support position. Councilwoman Ashcraft.
I also oppose. I want to keep it the way it is, no changes. Prop thirteen and what we can do with our estate planning. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Anybody else have any thoughts to agree with the committee? See thumbs downs? Any thumbs downs? I got one, two, three, four, five. Mr. Mutucci? Nothing. And he gave a thumbs down. Mr. Goodrich, you're still thumbs upping?
I'll go neutral thumbs up. It doesn't much matter at this point.
Right. Okay. So we'll be taking a neutral position on Prop nineteen. Prop twenty, restricts parole for certain offenses currently considered to be nonviolent, authorizes felony sentences for certain offenses currently treated only as misdemeanors. The League of California City supports Prop twenty because it would broaden the definition of violent felonies to reflect a wider universe of offenses. Addresses serial theft by enacting provisions facilitating prosecution for repeat offenders, address organized retail theft, enact changes to the management of the post-release community supervision population offenders, and more. The League supports Prop twenty. The analysis from the police department is to support position for the following reasons. It expands the list of violent crimes for which early release is an option, gives victims reasonable notice of inmates' release, reinstates DNA collection for certain crimes, revises the theft threshold by adding a felony for serial theft, and requires the Board of Parole Hearings to consider an inmate's entire criminal history when deciding parole. The committee concur with the League of California Cities and staff's recommendations to support Prop twenty. And tell me I'm not going to be shocked and look up and somebody's going to say no. Is everybody saying thumbs up with the committee on this one? I certainly hope so. Okay, so.
Is there a question, Mayor?
Prop twenty.
Mayor, yeah. Mayor, how?
Councilmember Chen.
Yeah, Mayor, what I want to do is, when you're concluding the, our decision on Prop nineteen, I thought you verbally said that it would be a new, we're taking a neutral position, but I believe as a council, we took an opposed position.
Okay, well, I can go back to that. Let me, maybe I didn't get that straight, but let's finish this one while we're here. The committee concur with the League of California Cities and staff recommendations to support Prop twenty. We have thumbs up on that. We are supporting Prop twenty, right? Okay, that's unanimous. Prop nineteen, that was, yeah. We need to discuss and determine the position. Okay, so we have down, down, down. So we're going to oppose Prop nineteen. Okay. We have a universal opposition for Prop nineteen. We did twenty. We go to twenty-one. Expands local government's authority to enact rent control on residential property. After review of Prop twenty-one, community developers took a no position because the city of Torrance does not have rent control and because the proposition does not require any action by the city to impose rent control. The committee's recommendation was two-one with Mayor and Councilmember Goodrich voting neutral, as Councilmember Chen take an opposed position on Prop twenty-one. With the committee vote on Prop twenty-one being two-one, council will need to discuss and determine the position. How does the council wish to act on twenty-one? Expands local government's authority to enact rent control on residential property. Am I down? All right. Councilmember Goodrich, are you up or down on that? Councilmember Goodrich.
I'm going to, yes, Mayor, I'm going to stay neutral on that just because I've got a longstanding history of just following our formula of the three items and on which to weigh in. I think it does us well as a city to stick to that instead of taking a position on stuff that doesn't even necessarily affect us.
I agree with that and I'll take a neutral too, so that it will be opposed, that would be opposed on a five-two. Okay, now we go to Prop twenty-five, a referendum on law that replaced money bail with systems based on public safety and flight risk. Police Department provided analysis on Prop twenty-five that it's unfair, unsafe, and costly. The analysis provided the details on this proposition. An opposed position was taken on Prop twenty-five by the police department. Many took an opposed position on Prop twenty-five, which was unanimous. You're not saying yes to the committee or you're saying down to the proposition. It's unanimously down to the proposition twenty-five. Again, I encourage you to review item nine F for more details on the League's resolution and ballot measures and justice to the public. On behalf of the Torrance City Council, do make sure you vote on November third, two thousand and twenty, to have your voice heard. And obviously, look, read the information that you receive and vote with your conscience and your heart and get it right. Which brings us down to council orals. Councilmember Griffiths.
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing I really want to say tonight is, since this is Mr. Jackson's last meeting, I just wanted to personally thank publicly Mr. Jackson for everything he's done for the city and your service. You will be greatly missed and we will think of you fondly going forward. Thank you for everything you've done for us.
Councilmember Colletti.
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to congratulate you, Mr. Jackson. Carry on bravely. Look forward to continuing to talk with you from time to time, and I'm going to congratulate in advance Iran's debut at our next, at our next meeting. Good night, everyone, and thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mutucci.
Thank you, Mayor. I do want to congratulate Mr. Jackson on the beautiful career here at the City of Torrance. You served us well. I've only been able to work with you a little over two years, but I've learned so much about you with your advice and guidance, and you've always been a voice of reason. You have a certain calming effect, and I truly appreciate the many years you've dedicated to our city. And we would have known that... And who would have known that, the last year that I took a picture of you while you were sitting at your desk, all the way from the lunchroom, that just, you know, a year later, you'd be retiring. I'm glad I took that picture. I still have it on my computer. And I believe, I'm hoping you still have that picture that I blew up and gave to you. Definitely great memories. God bless you. God bless your family and enjoy your retirement. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Ashcraft?
Thank you. I am impressed with anyone that has pictures of Mr. Jackson because he's notorious for being more than camera shy. At any event, he's in the back of the room. And so it's great to have some pictures of him. I really enjoyed seeing those tonight. Thank you, Leroy, for the wonderful job you've done. And not only thank you to you, but to Connie and all of your children, raising your children in Torrance and showing the importance of family. Family being the basis of, I feel, our society. You've set an example in everything that you do, being calm, coming up with great suggestions, being welcoming, and being honest. I feel you're honest in all of your dealings. And your wife, Connie, being the person she is, she's great. And being involved in education in Torrance. You've got feelers everywhere, so you might be retiring as a legend, but because you're that legend, you're going to be in our hearts forever. And we love you and your family. Thank you for all you've done.
Thank you. Councilmember Chen?
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to wish Mr. Leroy Jackson on a happy and blessed retirement. During my roughly two years here, I've learned a lot from you, especially professionalism, how you conduct the work, the respectfulness you have for everyone. And it's a model for all of us to take with us. So thank you very much for being a model, public servant to our community. Second item I'd like to share is, I, you know, I am awaiting the next time we get together for a council meeting that LA County would have dropped one tier. And hopefully by that time, the Alamo Mall is reopened. And good night, everyone. Thank you.
From your lips. Councilmember Goodrich?
Leroy, thank you for all your years of service. Really appreciated it. You've done a good job for us. And congratulations, to paraphrase the poet, "Do not go softly into retirement." And what I mean by that is, don't just sit back. I know you won't. Enjoy it. Live life to the fullest.
Thanks.
Take care.
Thank you. Oh, I know it can be overwhelming to stay up to date as the new information continues to be released. We continue to update our COVID-19 website as information becomes available. And you can find links to the county and the state orders and more at torranceca.gov/covid19. Please tune into City Cable or torranceca.gov and watch live COVID-19 Today, Monday through Thursday at 4:00 p.m. City Cable continues with the new program, Weekends in Torrance, which replaced the weekend episodes of COVID-19 Today. The show airs every Friday, Saturday, and Sunday at 2:00 p.m. Not many cities our size have live television, folks, and it's given you the information that you need as soon as it's still fresh. Weekends in Torrance features things to do around Torrance in the age of COVID-19. Tune in to watch the resiliency of our city as people wear face coverings, socially distance, modify operations, and take the necessary precautions to minimize the risk of infection while still trying to bring some normalcy back to our daily routines. You can also catch the replays of, on COVID-19 Today and Weekends in Torrance on YouTube or on our Facebook page. And for the most up-to-date information, please subscribe to Torrance Alert at torranceca.gov/torrancealert. I'm so shocked every day when I find somebody who does not have that app. It's free. It gives you information about everything happening in our city, whether it's a disaster, a road closure, automobile accident, a fire hydrant that maybe got hit in an accident. You know, it's invaluable. You can't put a price on a service like that. We send out county public health updates every day at 7:00 p.m. Please understand that Los Angeles County does not always send out their updates before our 7:00 p.m. If you see numbers remain the same or fluctuate, this could be because of new cases that have not yet been confirmed or confirmed places may have been reclassified. So sometimes it changes one time, you know, to flip up and down a number, but not to be concerned. We're just staying consistent with the county. I know it can be a struggle during this time to keep active and entertained. Sign up for Torrance E-newsletter to make sure you're updated on everything that's happening during the week. The E-newsletter goes out every Thursday at 4:00 p.m., and you can sign up at torranceca.gov/e-newsletter. And lastly, I want to thank Mr. Leroy J. Jackson for his dedicated service to our community and for his friendship. And your career has been a model to follow, maybe not in length. There aren't too many city managers out there willing to dedicate that many years of service. But your willingness to listen, to trust you and still in staff and colleagues, the extent of knowledge that you've shared, and of course, the kind and quiet leadership that you are infamous for. People outside City Hall don't know about the whistle. But if you're sitting in your office in City Hall and you hear the whistle, you know Leroy is about to approach. And I think it's always, it's one of those most courteous things that he does. He lets everybody know where he's at. Our city would not be resilient, would not be the resilient one we know today. Thank you, sir, and enjoy your well-deserved retirement. We will miss you, but again, we know where you are, and we have your cell phone on my feed dial, and we'll certainly call you. Mr. Jackson, anything from staff?
No, not at all. Thank you so much. Appreciate all the comments. And as was mentioned earlier, happy trails, and I'll see you down the road.
That ain't for darn sure. Thank you very much. Take a motion.
I'll do it.
Councilwoman Kalani?
Thank you. Motion to adjourn the City Council meeting to Tuesday, October 6, 2020, at 5:30 p.m. for closed session, with the regular meeting commencing at 7:00 p.m. in compliance with Governor Newsom's executive order N2920, which suspended portions of the Brown Act. Members of the Torrance City Council and staff will participate in this meeting via teleconference and other electronic means in our continuing effort to practice social distancing to reduce the spread of COVID-19. Members of the public are encouraged to watch the meeting via City Cable, Channel 3 Spectrum, and Channel 31 Frontier, streaming on torranceca.gov, Facebook at City of Torrance, CA Government, and YouTube channel Torrance City Cable. Tuesday, September 29, 2020 is a council dark night.
Councilwoman Ashcraft?
I second that.
Roll call vote, councilmember Ashcraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Chen?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodrich?
Aye.
Councilmember Griffiths?
Yes.
Councilmember Kalani?
Yes.
Councilmember Mutucci?
Yes.
Mayor Fury?
Yes.
Your honor, that motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Good night, everyone. Thank you for hanging in there with us. Don't forget to mind your space, cover your face, and if you do, we'll see you back at this place.